So, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April 2nd Litchfield School Board Meeting. The time is now 5:30, and we'll call the meeting to order and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get going tonight, I do want to just acknowledge and thank the board, right? I did have an opportunity to watch our last meeting. I was not in attendance for our last meeting, but I just wanted to take a moment and say thank you to the board, right, for putting your trust in me again, and I'm very humbled and grateful for the nomination of Chair, and I just wanted to publicly thank you for that. And I'm glad to be in this chair and leading the board again, so thank you for that, and congratulations to Ms. Ames for best chair again.
Thanks.
Teamwork.
It was a nod at, nod at.
Teamwork.
Yeah. I think because you weren't here, it was very easy to nominate you. You couldn't say no.
So, I drew the short star. Okay, perfect. All right, that's okay. That's all right, all good. We have review and revisions to tonight's agenda. Any board members who would like to make changes to tonight's agenda?
Welcome.
Yeah. Hearing none. We have, moving right along, we have final school board reorganization, and I'll turn it over to the superintendent for a few updates.
Yeah. So, with Chair Cutter out, last meeting, we decided to hold off on the Code of Ethics and Code of Conduct, so I have those copies here. I'm hoping you guys got a chance to check it out. I think last year, you guys made some changes to this, at least that's what it says in the records here of everything, but I can send this kind of around, so as the meeting kind of progresses, if you want to sign off on that, that would be great.
Perfect, thank you.
And then the second part is just committee assignments. These were off of our notes we took last week, just wanted to double-check that we make sure we got all the committee assignments correct, and if you had any adjustments or changes you wanted to make to any of these assignments. We did leave the Facilities Improvement Committee empty at that time, because you wanted to think it over some more as a group, but if you just want to check those assignments, that we have it correct, we believe we put everything down correctly, but in case we made a mistake, just let us know, so.
So, I'm on budget again.
Again. Not at.
All right. He didn't give me anything else.
All right.
I think maybe, I mean, obviously, it's the will of the board, maybe we can talk about facility improvement at the time that we have the conversation about.
Yeah, that's later in the agenda today, right?
Yeah, because they're presentations, obviously, that we can get to.
Okay. Perfect. Moving into consent agenda, we have our items on consent. I did update, speaking of budget, I did attend last week's Budget Committee meeting, and I did make an update to the Budget Committee consent, so if anybody would like a read, it's there. Any other items on consent the board would like to move this evening? All right, we have our summary of non-public actions from March 19th, 2025. Ms. Sarpansky motioned to approve the March 5th, 2025 meeting minutes. Mr. Shoemaker seconded that motion. That motion passed 3:01. Mr. DeWitt abstained. Mr. Shoemaker moved to accept the nomination of Courtney McGoon, Ms. Wade, as an LMS music teacher. Ms. Ames seconded that motion, which passed 4:00. Mr. Shoemaker motioned.
Message him this.
It says LMS.
LMS.
Resign without messaging coming in.
Yes, that's what it is, yes. This is to accept the nomination, this one.
I'm a loser, so.
Oh, you're good. It is all good.
Sorry, got the Duke ready to go.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah.
You're good, Jen, don't worry.
Mr. Shoemaker.
She's going to storm the stage.
Okay, let the mid stand. Mr. Shoemaker moved to adjourn the public session at 8:07 PM. Ms. Ames seconded that motion, and that carries 4:0. And tonight, we have presentation and recognitions, and I'll turn it over to our Human Resources Director, Ms. Holly Falcione.
All right, we're going to talk about our safety plan. So, in late February, early March, I was here, we talked about having a Department of Labor audit. We're, the wonderful inspector there helped me work on our safety plan. We've had one ever since I've been here, and the last one I found was dated around 2007. I think that was the creation date, but you're supposed to look at them and update them every two years. So, the plan that you see up there today has been updated since the last plan we have. I've sent it to our inspector, and they had kind of said things to add or take away from it. This is basically the same exact thing as our prior safety plan, but it's a little bit more concise. The one that we had before was many more pages. So, basically, the safety plan is where you're, you know, working together with management employees to keep employees safe in the district. The Joint Loss Management Committee is in charge of updating the plan. We've met over the past couple of months to review the plan and make sure it looks good for everyone. The only thing that is new in this plan compared to an old plan was if you go to page 23, in about, during COVID, actually, a law came out about having a student, there we go, Student Violence Prevention Management Program. So, this is, again, because this is safety for employees, this is talking about how we don't tolerate violence or bullying of any kind, and if there's any acts of violence towards employees, that we will make sure that we will, you know, file, staff will file a report, and then we'll review the incident and just find ways to make sure to keep people safe. So, last week, I sent this final report to the inspector. He said all was good on that, that basically, all we need to do now is every two years, our Joint Loss Management Committee needs to review and just, I made a little sign-off page on the last page of this, that we would just go through it every two years, look it over, see if there's things we want to change, and that's it. And he said, basically, I'm looking tonight to see if the board wants to approve the plan, or if you have any questions.
Has everyone had an opportunity to read the district safety program?
I have.
Yep.
Are there any questions about the program, comments?
No, just for board awareness, so I'm on Joint Loss. We did review it. In addition to that, we had our PRIMAX representative who was there that day and has reviewed the plan as well, just so folks know, it also went through our carrier, and they're the ones who provided some samples and, yep, suggested language. So, it's definitely gone through a few different other groups and people to be seen, and on Joint Loss, we have LEA representatives, our LSSA representatives, so I think it's, again, made its way through the different organizations and groups. So, I'm comfortable with it, but I certainly, you know, it's up to the board what to do.
I've certainly reviewed it as well. It definitely hasn't had a lot of eyes on it to get it to where it is, and appreciate all the hard work that's gone into it.
Thank you.
So, I'll entertain a motion to approve, and then we can sign. Is that what you're looking for? Does it need signatures?
The motion is fine, and then I can just sign this little back page.
That's what this, okay.
So moved.
We have a motion by Ms. Sarpansky, submitted by Mr. Shoemaker. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, that carries 5:00.
Thank you very much.
My pleasure, thank you.
Thanks, Holly.
All right, next up on our agenda, we have Alice Table Talk Drills, and I'll welcome our SRO to the table, Mr.?
I think Ms. Grantham's going to help with this. He's coming up, don't worry, George is coming up, bud.
Everybody's.
Everyone's coming up.
Jen's going to start us off.
I'll start us off. Jeff is here, because he's our safety director, grab some chairs, pull up, and we'll just talk about a really successful endeavor that we had last week. It's really great. I'm going to reiterate how amazing it is to have a full-time, almost full-time SRO in our building. Considering the middle school is so fabulous, it's great to just have his presence, to have him be known, and Officer Fula getting to know her as well has been really excellent. So, thank you to Chief for making that a priority, and for the school board for also making that a priority, because it really truly makes a difference in every day for the kids. So, I'll start with that. As you all know, Alice is a scary concept. It's a concept that none of us like to have to talk about, but it's a reality every day that we face with our students, that every day, students and staff, some of them are walking in in fear and wondering, what if the impossible happens? What if the unbelievable happens? And as a safety team, as we were talking about getting ready for launching the drills and launching what we had, George came forward with a great idea that was the first time that we did this. So, at LMS, we broke into younger kids and older kids, so fifth and sixth graders and seventh and eighth graders, in two assemblies. So, we brought the kids all together, and it wasn't Mr. Peterson and I presenting the information, it was our fine officers here who had just gone through a training with Alice directly to be able to talk to the kids, to kind of give them, because sometimes in middle school, you guys can nod and say, you don't take things as seriously as you need to, as you need to take things. But I think coming from the police perspective, it just gave a very different vibe to the table talk discussions, and I'll turn it over to Jeff a little bit more, and then I'll turn it over to the officers to talk a little bit more about what the day was like.
Sure, so we started in two groups, so fifth and sixth were with Officer Fula in the cafeteria, and seventh and eighth were with Officer Ivis in the gym, and they gave kind of an overview of what Alice is and when it would be used, set kind of the tone for the school. And then we went back to our best classes, which are all capped at like 15 kids, so small groups, and they had hypothetical scenarios to look at as a group, and the officers went around through the school, popping into the classrooms, answering questions, and there were a lot of questions, especially like the younger kids, for sure. They come up with all the possible things and all the hypotheticals, and officers were excellent going around and popping into classrooms and speaking to the kids about those things.
And Brian Morgan was also there, so he was a third presence in the, in the location walking around, and I will say, we had a little, can I say the surprise we had?
Sure.
We had a little surprise, so someone in the building accidentally called 911 during the drill, not intentional. It was, you know, that stupid iPhone where you push the two buttons, the side and the side, and it automatically defaults to that, and 911 hears, so, active shooter in the building, and they see the location, and they're all in the building going, there's no active shooter, but it was because the teachers were talking through the scenarios. And so, Brian comes into my office and goes, 911 was just called. I was like, oh, no, let's figure out where this was, and it was a very quick investigation and resolved immediately, and the person who made the phone call just felt mortified that it was not their call. But it was, it was just really great to have that presence and to see that, the way that our community reacts, even in the case of a 911 call or with an active shooter, like they were, they were there and instantly responding to us that there was nope, just to clarify. At home, there was no active shooter, it was just the conversations at the table talk as we're talking.
Yeah, so when we kind of were kicking around what we were going to do for the table talk exercises, I had talked to Vice Principal Peterson and Principal Grantham about maybe an idea of getting everyone together in one big group and just going over, you know, how important it is to learn these skills, not just for the school, but for life, okay? These incidents, these violent critical incidents can happen anywhere, anytime. As a matter of fact, you know, when Officer Fula and I had, just were finishing up the training, there was an incident in the Department of Fitness in Lunandary, and I think if you, if anyone happened to read the article, or some of the articles about that, they interviewed, there was a girl who was there working out, and she was stuck inside the dressing room, bad place to be during an active shooter incident, and she said, you know, through her training, through Alice at Lunandary, she learned to, you know, she hit herself into the, a locker, and, you know, so she felt as though she was prepared. Obviously, you never know how you're going to react in a bad situation during a violent critical incident. So, we were just trying to empower the kids as best we could to learn, you know, a few things and be able to become their own first responders. You know, if I'm in the school, or if there's another SRO at school, or another officer in the school, and something happens, and I'm in the lunchroom, and something happens in the fifth grade wing, by the time an officer gets just to the fifth grade wing, there could be a lot of bad things that happen. So, and that's inside the school. So, can you imagine the response time if, you know, someone was outside the school, or, you know, I wasn't there, or something like that, or another officer wasn't there? So, through the Alice training stuff, we're taught that, you know, we try to train the kids to become their own first responders and give them some, you know, tools to help them survive an violent critical incident. And so then, when you think about it, though, you know, you're talking with some of these kids, and the age disparity between fifth grade and level of maturity between fifth grade and eighth grade is off the charts. So, you get fifth graders there that are, they're still like, hangover kids, they don't work parents, stuff like that, you know, and then you get some of the eighth graders that, you know, taller than me. And so, it really has to, you know, it has to be a light touch. Officer Fula did the fifth and sixth graders, she did an outstanding job, you know, kind of bellowing the approach, and I kind of, in the sixth and seventh grader, I kind of like, this is what you need to do, this is what you look out for, and we went through the process, it was a quick process, so we had time to get into the table talk exercises, but it seemed to work out well, I guess we had some great feedback and.
This afternoon, we had our staff meeting, and we kind of did a debriefing with our staff as a whole of, this was the first time we've ever done it in this process, and I think the staff breathed a sigh of relief as well, because for them, they're still learning. I mean, they are the experts in Alice as the adults to lead, and they've gone through the trainings online, but they still have questions. Like, we even had questions that came up today about what if this, and how do we hold the door, and what do we do to make sure kids, if it is going out the window, how do we make sure kids know how to do, be safe? And they were asking questions about, could we practice going out like we do for the bus drills, where the kids jump down and know how to help each other out the, out the back of the bus? Could we do that for a window? I said, you know, that's something to consider, but there were a lot of questions, but I think the overall feedback from our staff as a whole was, they were thrilled to have had the opportunity to have two experts, police officers that were there to talk to the kids, to kind of emphasize, but not scare, because I think sometimes for kids in middle school, it can be scary to have these kinds, we don't want anybody going home in anxiety that tomorrow, there's going to be a school shooting in Litchfield. That's not our goal. We want to kind of give them the tool belt to help build those skills and understanding so that it, you know, God forbid it ever did transpire, they know what to do. It's not a what if, and I don't know. Anything else?
Um, yeah, so just, I mean, as police officers, we always talk about how when we're in high-stress situations or an active incident, we always fall to our lowest level of training, it's just because of how our brains work, everyone's brain, right? It's why when you're avoiding an accident, you generally put your hands back to tendon two, because that's how you were trained in driver's ed, it's just something you do. So, for us, we like to train, we like to just do reps, because what it does is it creates pathways in your brain so that when those things happen, you can breathe and do what you need to do, and that's what we're hoping with Alice training, creating those pathways for kids to stop and actually think about, well, what would I do? The nice thing about Alice is it does give you the choice. If you want to stay in your classroom and barricade, you can do that. If you have the opportunity to evacuate and you want to do that, then you can do that. Alice taught us that there's no wrong decision, because the decision you make in the moment is the right one, because you have all the information that you have, and that's it. So, we, our hope was to ease the kids' minds, but also empower them, give them confidence, and we're hoping to, to, you know, continue with this so that we can make them even more confident, so that someday, if they're at Home Depot on a Saturday morning with mom and dad, you know, they hear shots ring out, or they hear something that's concerning, they can, they can fall back to that training that they received, just like that girl that literally five hours after we left training, there was, there was an officer involved shooting in Lunandary that started at Planet Fitness, of all places. People are working out, they have their headphones in, they're not paying attention, and now they're hearing shots being fired. That was something that we also talked to the kids about, situational awareness. I think nowadays, with the technology, it's easy to not be aware. I mean, I've pulled over people in town with their headphones on, driving their cars, you know, and that's something to talk to these kids about, because they have all these things at their, at their fingertips, but if, the more aware you are, the faster you can react and all that. So, we're hoping to keep going and give these kids the confidence that they need to make good decisions in the moment, so.
So, that leads to, historically, as a district, we've done an active drill.
Stealing my thunder.
Oh, sorry.
Look, you're rolling, I'm just going to sit back. Keep going.
So, we will be, as exactly what Officer Fula was talking about, sorry, Brian.
Sorry, I guess I jumped the gun first.
We will be continuing that process and hopefully have the tools and the tool belt for the kids to understand what to do. The next drill that we have at some point in the near future will be more of that, okay, here's this scenario, this is still a drill, it's not real, but what are you going to really do? It's not talk about it, it's do it. It's show us, if you're going to evacuate, show us how you evacuate. If you're going to lock down and barricade, show us how you're going to lock down and barricade. If you have to inform because you see or hear something, you're going to inform. And I think those are the things, like, even though we've gone through the training and we have the new phones of how to page from any phone in the, in the district, any phone in the building, teachers need those reminders of, this is how you do it. This is if you have something to, you're going to inform the whole building, that's how you can go about it. So, sorry.
Yeah, so I was just going to piggyback on, so at this point, all three schools have done Alice table talks in the past couple of months, age appropriate for their level. Obviously, an elementary table talk around this is going to look different than a high school table talk around this. So, we've been doing that at each of the schools, age appropriate for them, we're sending out a message to the community in the upcoming days, because we are going to do an active drill, very similar to the drill we did last year, in about the same timeframe before April break, where we have kind of that active situation at each of the schools. We'll have our whole team, the whole emergency team, including the police and fire and other safety personnel, go to each of the schools. We'll start at one of the schools and then go each, every hour to each of the three. We're not going to announce the date of that ahead of time, other than it will be between now and April vacation, so we can have some real-time reaction for kids to kind of, in that type of situation, what would they do in that. So, very similar to last year, and as a credit to, you know, the police, to our administration for getting the kids prepared for that. We don't, it's unfortunate we have to do these drills, but it's important that we do. You know, hopefully, it's something that we never actually have to kind of follow through on, but even in nonviolent critical situations, you mentioned, it's still good training for different things, you know? For example, we had the evacuation at CHS a couple of weeks ago, and it was good to kind of fall back on some of the safety protocols that we learned, even though it's not necessarily an Alice situation, but some of the things that we learned through this process and applying it to other situations. So, I want to thank the support of the police department, particularly SRO Ivis, he's been wonderful to us this year, just doing a great job in the school, so supportive of everything that we're doing, and we're going to continue to kind of, kind of work on this. So, open it up to the board for any questions for these guys, or for anything along those lines.
My thought, what a difference a couple of years makes.
Oh, my goodness.
I mean, night and day. I'm hearing your presentation, and I'm just thinking to myself, if we reflect back even a few years ago, two years ago, when we didn't have an SRO, when we were talking about getting to this point, it's amazing. What you do, officers, is you bring relevance to the conversation, and it's more than just a teacher talking about this, you bring the credibility to the kids, right? And they're listening and they're understanding more than just a teacher who they're listening to every day, and I can't thank anyone for doing that.
Yeah, I mean, I'll mirror that. I know when Chief Jones came in, immediate conversations were around, you need to beef this up, we need to do better at practicing, and it needs to be more involved, and, I mean, it's just amazing, you guys have implemented this like very quickly, and again, I just, I mirror that, thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, can I jump in on that?
Please, Chief.
So, when I started a year, two months, 24 and a half days ago, I had several.
The minutes.
Not everything has been uphill or, but in all seriousness, I had a lot of goals rattling around in my head, and some of the goals started with having officers who stepped up and went above and beyond, and instead of me saying, you do this, you do this, people coming to me and saying, I want this training, I want this task, I want this job, and these two, and the sergeant, really, everybody in the department, people are just stepping up and saying, I want this piece of the pie, and sometimes even pieces of the pie that we didn't even know we needed. This one, we obviously knew, but, you know, George was thrust into the role, and I'm hearing fantastic things, which isn't a surprise. Rebecca's is, came in and said, you know, I want this Alice training, I want to go and be part of the school. And then the other half is, I want to build a relationship with the community. Last night, we had our first ever Citizens Police Academy start, so that's fantastic, but ultimately, I wanted a great relationship with the school, any place I've ever worked, that's always been the case, and this past year has just been amazing. I talked to Brian quite honestly, way more than I want to. But, but totally very positive, totally very positive. In all seriousness, like, all these goals that I said, in my mind, I thought, we're going to take years, here we are, a year, two months, 24 and a half days later, and these officers who stepped up and did the right thing are now being recognized by the school board. So, this, there's nothing in my job that makes me happier than what's happening here tonight. So, I just want to thank you, as well as Jen, for bringing it up, and the officers and the supervisors, so thank you.
Appreciate you, thank you. All right, excellent, anything else?
Thank you very much, guys.
You guys are doing a great job, thank you.
Thank you for the presentation tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
All right, shifting gears, we have our student representatives tonight. Hello, Nick and Danny, welcome to the party, right? What's going on in our schools this week?
Not much, to be honest.
Not much?
Okay, all right, everyone gearing up for vacay.
Spring sports kicked off for sure.
Yes, our spring sports, most of them don't have actual games until like the next, like, two-ish weeks, but they have had practices every day. We have our teams now, and some, I know, baseball and girls lacrosse had scrimmages with Alveron, I don't know about the other sports, but I think that they did very well yesterday.
Now, lacrosse is going to like, we're going to like a group scrimmage, or it's going to have, I think, three teams. I think maybe Timberland's going and then two other ones, so that'll be good. So, we had the St. Patrick's Day Lunchie on for Campbell Staff and SAU. Food was served by Kathy and Sean McDonough and the Campbell Epercons. There was the FPLA overnight conference, and Campbell won the award for recruiting the most new members.
The robotics team called Potential Energy placed second at the NE District UVM event this past weekend. They also won the Team Spirit Award, and those are some pictures of them.
The last day of quarter three is tomorrow, and we have the Sweetheart Dance on the 5th.
Some of the future activities that we had going on at Campbell was the first LEGO Expo that's going to be in the CAF, I'm pretty sure, and then on the 19th, Student Council's going to the Manchester Food Bank, we do this every single year, it's one of our, like, traditions, and then this year, Bridgette and Anthony, as their legacy is, Dunus calling it, is our new Family Feud Assembly on the 24th.
What do you guys do at the food bank?
We go and we get there like before all the people get there, and we pretty much take all the food off of the trucks, and we get, we all like wear gloves, it's very sanitary, and then we end up helping pass out the food, because most times, it's like, you have to like ration it out to all the families. And then, we also give flowers out to the people waiting in line, and then, once that's over, we go and pack up leftover food and pretty much just like help out with anything that they need that day.
Cool, great. SAT prep is in full swing for the juniors, and SAT is on the 17th.
At the middle school, the seventh grade science student went searching in the woods for hemlock, wooly, agolid, an invasive species. They marked and catalogued trees to report back to scientists from the Gulf of Maine Research Institute. Music and macaroni on April 10th at 6 o'clock in the LMS cafeteria, you can come and join them for a fun evening of cabaret featuring students from the LMS Band and Chorus and enjoy an amazing spaghetti dinner. One Book, One School, One Book, One School started last week. All students received a copy of The Out of My Mind by Sharon Draper. Literacy team has put together a Google Classroom, and a very constructive response from students put in earns them a raffle ticket for amazing prizes. Congrats to Lauren L., who was the first winner of $100 in bowling passes.
In that Griffin, last week, the students celebrated Read Across America with many great themed days such as Crazy Hats, Dress as an Animal, Wacky Wednesday, Dress for the Job You Want, and Pyjama Day. Tomorrow, the Discovery Museum will be here for third grade, and fourth grade will soon be starting their squid dissection.
It's always a fan favorite.
Yes. Any questions?
No, appreciate the update as always. All right, any questions for our student representatives from the board tonight?
Busy times.
Busy times, all right. Uh, next up on our agenda tonight is our first of two community comments on agenda items. All right, seeing nobody running up to the microphone, we'll close community comment and we'll shift gears into correspondence.
All right, bear with me, we've got about a month's worth of correspondence here, but it's not too, too bad. Um, I did start a new document, as we're in the new year, so it'll keep track of that. Here we go, March fourth, twenty-twenty-five, Dan Dewitt emailed, um, the school board. That was a farewell and thank you to Ms. Harrison for her advocacy and dedication throughout her nine years. On March seventh, Jan Sullivan emailed the board circulating draft March fifth, twenty-twenty-five, public and non-public minutes. On March tenth, teacher Carolyn Lee emailed the board thanking the board for their continued support of the arts and music and inviting us to attend the concerts that week. On March eleventh, Anne Anamoradi emailed the board circulating the payroll manifest, which was the four oh three B contributions. On March eleventh, Michaela Demeter emailed the board, um, from New Hampshire School Funding Fairness. Organization requesting that Litchfield School Board members sign a letter to the House Finance Committee regarding funding for public schools. On March twelfth, Dan Dewitt emailed the board and FIC, uh, circulating the, uh, February twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five, meeting minutes from the facilities meeting. March twelfth, superintendent emailed the board forwarding correspondence sent to the school staff, um, with his description of the voting results. On March fourteenth, Anne Anamoradi circulated the accounts payable manifest. On March fourteenth, the superintendent emailed the board providing a confidential personnel update. On March fifteenth, Mr. Cutter emailed the board advising the board of a work conflict for the March nineteenth meeting. On March fifteenth, Mr. Cutter emailed the board, um, and specifically, Mr. Dewitt welcoming him to the school board. On March seventeenth, Renee Burgess emailed the school board circulating the draft March nineteenth agenda. On March eighteenth, Anne Anamoradi circulated the check manifest for EverSource in order to get ahead of the billing cycle and avoid late charges for that particular vendor. On March twentieth, Anne Anamoradi emailed the board circulating the credit card manifest. On March twenty-first, Principal Jay Hess emailed the board regarding a confidential personnel matter. On March twenty-third, Jan Sullivan emailed the board circulating the March, the draft, March nineteenth, public and non-public minutes. On March twenty-sixth, Anne Anamoradi emailed, uh, circulating the payroll manifest, which are four oh three B contributions and the LEA LSSA dues. On March twenty-eighth, Principal Jay Hess emailed the board again regarding a confidential personnel matter. On March twenty-eighth, the superintendent emailed the board regarding a confidential personnel matter. On March twenty-eighth, Anne Anamoradi emailed the board circulating the accounts payable manifest. On March twenty-eighth, Julie Darling emailed the board circulating the MS twenty-two, um, for review and requesting signatures, as well as an update on an audit. On March thirtieth, the superintendent emailed the board circulating the draft agenda for tonight's meeting. On March thirty-first, Renee Burgess emailed the board circulating the draft agenda for tonight's meeting. On April first, the board received an email from a parent regarding a confidential student situation. And on April first, Sarah Poole, uh, Special Services Director emailed the board regarding a confidential student situation.
Nailed it.
Caught up.
Thank you very much. All right, uh, thank you for that update as always. Uh, turning it over to the superintendent for general business updates and first up enrollment.
Yep.
Let's just hold it steady.
We're holding steady, nothing's changing. Uh, we got a few more kindergarten registrations as of, uh, earlier today. Uh, but we did get one call late in the afternoon from North Carolina, so some family moving up, those looking registered kindergarten kids. So, um, assuming those numbers will continue to rise as the spring kind of unfolds, but otherwise, kinda steady in our numbers.
We're at fifty-three?
We're fifty-three today, as of this morning. Official, fully registered through the system.
And we're thinking seventy-five, was that the number?
That's what our prediction, I think we had seventy-eight or something like seventy-seven. Right on that cut line number is where we were like kinda floating around, so. As it's been in the past couple of years. And that's enrollment.
Thank you.
Um, so the next thing, default budget discussion. So, right there is a link to kind of, um, we have about two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand-dollar difference between proposed budget and for the default budget. So, we've been working on kind of, uh, what would be kind of proposed, I guess, reductions to kind of hit that number and how we could do it. So, this is just kind of what we looked at administratively, as, as how we could end up being there. I think we were trying to accomplish a couple of important things, um, as kind of a administrative team as we're looking at this. One, we didn't wanna hit one particular school or department too hard compared to other areas. So, we tried to kind of spread things out, uh, between district-wide, uh, between the three schools, between special ed, non-special ed, everything like that. Um, it was very important that we kept all of our people. We have great people in our district and we wanna keep our people, so we were trying to do this, um, without cutting any personnel that was currently, um, on our staff, you know? And, uh, making sure we could maintain everyone that, that we have, and we feel we were successful in that matter. And then just trying to be conscious of, of where we're going, what we need and really, really need, and what we don't really need, and, and kind of get into a number. So, the idea is this is kind of the worksheet that we would work off of. Nothing becomes, uh, well, we have the official budget number, but in terms of transferring and moving money around, that's something we have to wait till July first to do, to do those ti- type of steps. But we would even out lines, um, that have a little more money in it and ship them around and reduce some of these particular lines to kind of spread things out, so we can hit all of our, um, points that we proposed in our budget. So, you can kind of go through the list here and kind of see some of them. I'm gonna highlight some of the more significant things. Some of these are small things, just for, for people, um, who are following along, like slight reductions in, in general supply lines at different schools, those type of things. Uh, but some of the bigger things and, and that I think, you know, the board should be aware of is one of the proposals in here. For example, I, I spoke on it last time, is, um, to eliminate the late afternoon bus run that we have here for the district. And, you know, with the default budget, when it comes to transportation, when you calculate that, you have to remove high school transportation as part of that calculation, cause it's not mandated by law. But I think we should transport, do bus transportation for high school students to and from school. So, something has to give in that kind of area, and that, what might have to give on that, and what we were recommending giving on that is eliminating kind of the late bus. Um, as part of that, that saves us about twenty-eight, twenty-nine thousand dollars to do that. Um, in which, it's almost, it's not an exact replica, but kind of is the cost, little, almost the exact cost of what high school transportation is, to continue those kind of routes and stuff. A couple of other significant reductions are around some of the repair, um, things that we wanna work on at the different schools. Uh, for example, at LMS, um, in the bathrooms, there's, needs to be significant repairs and replacements to sinks, flooring and other type of things in those type of areas. Uh, that could be something that we could recommend coming back to the board and suggesting with, uh, any potential end-of-the-year funds that we have, um, here and stuff like that at the end of this year, so we can just still get that work accomplished. Um, and get, get stuff taken care of in a safe manner at our schools and everything. Um, other things that draw your attention is, is I think we gotta cut, cut bait on the ropes course. Um, you know, that's something that, in a default, you know, that is something that we've talked a little bit about here and there. Um, I would recommend us starting the process of, of taking that all down this year, using some of the funds we have in our, in our current budget. And then removing the funds associated with the ropes course, that's in next year's, next year's budget at this point. Um, I know we've kind of talked about with the town, what do we do, who's gonna take ownership, who can, can we make this work? But if we are in a situation where we gotta give some stuff up, that, that's something I think, you know, we're not using it. Like, it's just being honest, we're not using it at school level, so, um, I, I don't think it makes a ton of sense to, to kind of maintain it in that kind of capacity.
Is that something Rec would take over?
Yeah, I mean, if they want to, here, we'll throw it to them if they want, but if it's left to our devices, I, I think we would. Uh, you know, we've reached out to, to a particular vendor who does this type of work and asked if, if, you know, steps to do, if we were to take this down and, uh, process to kind of go through that and stuff like that. Um, but if the town, I know the town was, and the Rec Commission was talking about it, if they want to, great, but I, I think we have to move past it as a school district, so.
Remind me where it is, like, is it on school property? If they wanna take on, if they wanna take that on, we need to know like now, right?
And we've had conversations.
By the end of the, the June thirtieth, we've had conversations. We had during the budget cycle, we've met over, way back in the summers when we first talked about it. We talked about it in the fall. We did a tour with people from the Rec Department and stuff like that, going through all the spaces and everything during the fall. And we were all just talking about, I think one of the things we were trying to pers- pursue was there any way to be a financial benefit for the district? And there's just not. We've been kicking the tires on different things, talking to different people. Um, can we rent out the space and just, we haven't been successful frankly, in trying to get something concrete down to do that, you know? Um, and then coupled with the fact that we're in default, some things gotta give. This feels like a natural thing that, that we should give on, so. Um, but we can certainly continue discussions with Rec if that's something and, and work on that kind of transition. If they, if they wanna take it on, we're happy to do that. Um, we're no ru- there were no rush to go up there and rip everything off, so, um, you know, we can continue that, that kind of discussion. Um, the other thing is, uh, six-period classes, so, um, we reduced the line that has, um, extra money for, uh, for example, in the high school, if we have, depending on enrollments, a particular subject area or something, if we need to teach, have a teacher teach a sixth class because of, because of a specialty or a particular class or something like that, we have budgeted for that. Um, typically in our budgets, we have reduced that line for next year, so we have limited the high school on the ability to, for teachers to teach six classes next year. Um, again, that's not taking away anyone's job, which is an important thing for me. Those are extras. Um, but that's something that tangible, we can kind of, kind of control. And so, we've, we've asked the high school, if they've done their scheduling, to make sure teachers are limited to their five required classes and stuff, so. And then the rest of those, you can look through, they're, they're small things, uh, relatively small in the big scheme of things. Everything's important. I don't wanna, don't wanna go over the top, but, um, you know, things we can kind of live without.
With the, um, restricting six-period classes, what does that mean for students?
Well, we actually, it, you know, luckily, nothing too big this year. Like, when we did the schedule, when they did enrollments and stuff like that, no one was like in a dire situation where we had to restrict and prevent offering a class just because of the fact that we're eliminating the six classes. We did make a conscious effort this year in collaboration with the high school to limit classes that don't have at least ten kids in it. There are a couple specialty-type classes that have maybe seven or eight kids in it, um, for example. Uh, but otherwise, we've asked them to limit the number of classes that have less than ten. So, that coupled with this idea of, of coming limited, we're, we're offering what we, we intend to offer, pretty much. Um, a couple of classes a little bit bigger than maybe people wanna stomach, closer to that over twenty kind of marking, but not anything inappropriate, you know? Where if we had the flexibility, maybe we would divide that class up a little bit more, um, but it's not gonna prevent any of the offerings we have at the high school.
Do we know how many kids take the late bus?
Not a lot, relative speaking, you know what I mean? Um, it can, it can, it can change on any given day, depending on the co-curricular offered, you know, sometimes, um, you know, they get in the double digits, closer to, you know, maybe twenty-ish kids, but other days not that high, you know?
So, so we're talking less than a busload?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, I know this is something, we, we had to do this in my previous district too. We got to the point where it just wasn't, uh, it wa- didn't make sense financially to continue to, to offer that for what the cost was, so.
Does that do anything with our bus contract?
No, because it, it's like dependent on this, like, there's clauses in our contracts that, depending on where you're, I'm not phrasing it correctly, but depending on the funding mechanisms, you know what I mean, you can make adjustments to certain things as you're doing and stuff like that, so.
I'm just surprised it's twenty-eight grand or twenty-nine grand for, like, a single busload of kids.
All year long.
Isn't it? Is it two buses? One does the north side, one does the south side?
Two buses in the range between two and twenty-five kids on each bus.
Yeah.
And that's true even with spring sports starting this up this week at LMS? With the volume of kids doing.
Timing of when the bus comes and when the sports are, it doesn't align usually.
Okay.
Now, like anything, you know, these are our, you know, recommended reductions. The board obviously has final say on these type of matters. You'll see one thing is empty in the slot, cause we're working on the exact costs associated with ESY transportation rights. There, uh, Ms. Poole is working on that stuff right now. And while we are anticipating savings in that particular line, you know, we don't know the exact amount yet, because it is dependent on the specific students we have in those programs over the summer. Um, not saying it's gonna be twenty-eight thousand dollars, but we are gonna have some savings, we anticipate in that line. And again, as we kind of approach and see how things cost when we actually turn around and buy it, you know? For example, chairs and desks, I know these are little things. Usually vendors give you higher quotes than when it actually comes time to buy them. So, you know, a little bit here, a little bit there. Maybe we're in a situation next year where, you know, we can kind of come back to some of these things that are on this list and we can get them done, so.
I mean, as a part of these discussions, right, and I know, and we had a, a, a meeting last week, where we always talk about what's, what's kind of tagged for end-of-year, right? Spending and w- w- it kind of lends itself into the discussion about, well, what, geez, what are we starting to project for end-of-year financials? So, do we have to start, do we start to have kind of that perspective?
I, I started to kind of plan that. Um, a lot of it, we have to adjust a lot of the encumbrances, and we haven't really gotten to that point yet. Um, I'm suspecting, you know, hopefully like by a couple weeks into May, we have a better idea. Um, I mean, I think that we'll be judging from like the financials and how we're spending at this point. I think that we are gonna be in a good position to have, um, you know, a, a decent amount, an appropriate amount, hopefully, um, of end-of-year spending, but I don't have like a good enough gauge at this point. It's just too early in the year. So, I will continue to work on that.
I do think, you know, I remember sitting through, I think it was a June meeting where you all discussed end-of-the-year stuff last year and, and that whole process. And knowing from, from other places I've been, you know, I, I think things that talk about, um, the physical structure of buildings and safety of buildings, that is excellent use of end-of-year funds. So, some of the things that we're trying to wait until next year's budget to kind of, um, fix and repair, and I think like the sinks in the bathrooms is a great example of this, right? Um, that is an appropriate thing that you would try to accomplish with end-of-year funds, you know, that type of stuff. It's not an extra set of Chromebooks or an extra set of this, right? It is physical plant things that you're trying to accomplish that sometimes are tough to anticipate in a budget process because of the wear and tear.
Tried to get it done last year. It's unfortunate we didn't have a quote.
And, uh.
Like, I don't know how else to say that.
Yeah. And like with the wear and tear of a year, things that develop. I know one of the things that, you know, we're gonna discuss this in the months ahead, but there's some physical cracking on the exterior at CHS that we should really take care of now before it becomes a GMS level problem, right? Like, which is, uh, you know, relatively minor expense in the big scheme of things when we're talking millions of dollars, but would be an excellent utilization of end-of-the-year funds and stuff like that. So, um, there are certainly things on here that, that would fall, I think, in that kind of category of safety in building facility that while we budgeted for next year, it does not hurt to move up the, move up to the timeline of it and utilize some of the funds we have now this year to do it. So, that will help a little bit with this as well.
So, in terms of the default, are you looking for decisions?
I'm looking kind of, uh, uh, I guess, I don't.
Direction, I mean, it's kind of.
Direction, yeah, like maybe a blessing that this list looks pretty good, as things may, if anything, major changes report back to the board. But like the general idea of what is here, um, you're okay and comfortable with. It doesn't have to be final until later, correct?
Right.
So.
I think the direction is, is right. I don't know, is there anything that's blatant on the list? Let me ask a question for the board. Is there anything blatant on the list the board does not agree with?
I noticed that the superintendent is not gonna get an increase in his salary.
Well, yeah, we didn't pass the budget, it's okay.
I, I disagree with that, so.
I appreciate that, but.
But I'm ser- I'm serious. I understand. I'm just saying, it's on here as on the chopping block, and that is not something I agree with. Um, no, I think you guys did a really thorough job going through this. I mean, I guess the only question I would have is anything that's marked with end-of-year funds, if that could be ranked in some way? In terms of importance, like it's more important to replace the sinks than it is for the volleyball net, or, you know, whatever it is that, um, like that, how it's ranked is helpful for me in understanding from administration perspective and the district perspective, you know, how, depending on what we have left over at the end of the year.
If you could do a, a sum for the things that you're marking as end-of-year.
Yep.
Yeah, I have a document started, so, um, I can share that with everyone, but I, I do have a plan to, um, be able to rank that. Um, so it can, everyone can be on the same page. Right now, everything that's on the list, um, we have a, it's about eighty-six thousand dollars.
Does it have, include things not on this particular list, though?
It does not.
Oh, okay.
I, I do have a question about the HVAC.
Sorry, it does, it does have the charging.
HVAC maintenance and service at GMS and CHS?
Yeah, we're, we're hedging a little bit there. Like, we've had a, well, when we wrote this, we've, knock on wood, um, okay with the HVAC systems at those two respective schools, so like, the lines that, the amount of money we have set aside for, for GMS next year was eighteen thousand, or we have currently in the budget is eighteen thousand dollars, which is what carries over in the fault. And then for CHS, uh, and then for C H S, twenty-eight thousand dollars, and we haven't quite had to use that for that purpose.
Yeah, yes.
There's still a couple of months.
Tempting fate.
We are. We are a hundred percent tempting fate, we are, like, and I think that's part of what, like, and this is a fine line, right? Like, we're in a default budget, we don't want to lose what we do and what we try to accomplish, we want to try to make the best of this. But like, there's also, like, we proposed a budget for a reason, right? Like, that's the number we needed, if we needed two-hundred-and-eighty, if we thought we needed two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars less, we would have proposed a budget that two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars less, right? So these are the things that we're going to have to kind of hold our breath a little bit on and and see how things go next year, right? There's a couple of notes in here that says, yeah, we're okay, but thank goodness we have a repairs line, reserve fund, because if things get dicey, that's where we're going, which might mess up other plans, right? Like, that's kind of the, the like touch and go here, right? Like, so that's a perfect example of those lines, like, we have had, again, knock on wood, successful in our in our HVAC, relatively speaking, at G M S and C H S this year, but that's no guarantee that we'll have that same success next year for those units, you know?
So I guess that was going to be my follow-up question, so Matt, thank you for going down that road, because I was going to ask it, too. Let's say if that happens and then something happens, do we have a contingency to cover, like emergency repairs if needed?
We always do, in the sense that we can move money around, transfer money around, particularly in in emergencies, right? And lots of things can happen, like we're coming, you know, we're going to talk about hiring, right? And this is kind of a a natural thing, when you talk about attrition and hiring. You know, we're going to hire someone potentially this evening who's going to be cheaper than the person they're replacing, right? So there's some of that quote-unquote contingency, right? So that's where some of that kind of funds can kind of be in emergency, or when the time comes, we're going to give something up, right? Like, we won't, we don't spend all our money on July first, right? So if we had something HVAC system go in the middle of the winter for something and need a significant repair, well, we're going to have to save somewhere else, and maybe we're not purchasing something else that we normally would in the spring and stuff, so.
Yeah, it's, it was more of, you know, boiler number three decides to pop a line and, you know, we shut down half the school, we have a method to get it back up online.
Yeah, I mean, that's the power, and again, when we talked about the voting, while obviously it would have been lovely if everything had passed, but some of the Warren articles that were passed were very critical for these emergency situations, right? Like that reserve fund for billing and repairs, we can access, the board can access that at, when they need to, right? In the case of an emergency and stuff like that, so we would be covered.
Sounds good. Still coming up to speed, so thank you.
Yeah, it's great, it's a good question. And and again, it's, it is that balance, like, we, we don't want people to think we can magically always come up with these numbers, like when we go into a default, so we're just always going to go in the default, people need to understand that, that that we're not going to have as much stuff as we thought we were going to have, right? We're going to have to limit some stuff next year, maybe that's not evident in one year of a default budget, but if you get into a pattern of it, you're going to really start to affect it over time, you know? And we can make it work for a year, and we'll be conscious, like we said throughout the whole budget process. We were working with a budget we didn't develop, and now that we've been working on this budget this year, when we come next year to the table with the budget, we'll have a much stronger knowledge base of of the true intent of some of those numbers behind it, right? Just because we will have that experience of being a full year behind us in the school district, right? And so I'm assuming the budget will look different next year period, right? But yeah, we're going to hit, we get a little hits.
No, I completely understand, it's like any other financial situation, right? But I do want to echo that, I know I've told you on the side previously, I have been seeing that you guys are working to define the budget and bring administrative practices that I normally don't see in a school budget system, so I I really appreciate the work that you guys are doing, and it's, I give all the credit to Brian, you and your team and the rest of the school systems to help define that. So it's really refreshing, it's really good for me to see as I went back a few years and watching budget committee meeting videos and coming to new. It it was, even in your short time, I'm seeing a significant difference, so I appreciate it.
Yeah, but thank you, it's a team effort, I will not take all the credit for it, for for sure, so.
Okay, well, as you kind of digest the list of potential reductions, certainly over the next month or so, sixty days or so, this will be a continued discussion as we look to finalize the the end of the year.
Sounds good.
All right. Hiring.
So I want to give just. More, well, well, maybe. So first hiring update. Jake, Jake S., our principal at C H S is moving on to a new opportunity, and I won't spoil it quite so much yet, it's not my business to spoil that, but we are anticipating that he's moving on to a new opportunity, the way that that school hiring works, you know? Sometimes we have to work for, wait for other board meetings to finalize their stuff, but we we want to get going on our process, so. I'm going to miss Jake, I've known Jake for a few years now. I'm in a tough couple of different capacities, I think he does a good job with what he does, and I'm excited to see what he does in the future and his new, with his new adventure here, and I know we're going to continue to be in touch and everything because it's a small world education in the state and everything, so. We'll miss him certainly at Campbell and stuff, but with him leaving, that means we need to hire a new principal, or anticipating hiring a new, I should keep saying anticipate, we are anticipating the need to hire a new principal at Campbell High School. So I wanted to kind of go over that process with the board and what we're kind of envisioning for that search process, kind of taking different things, different processes that certainly I've been a part of in different capacities and what's been tradition and here in the town and in the school district when you've done these sort of bigger hirings, and make sure we're on the same page, and if we want to fine tune anything and answer any questions that people have, kind of get going on it. So if you click on that link, it just kind of gives you kind of an overview timeline, what we're thinking about, search committee interview, kind of steps and processes there, this is just a quick summary, it doesn't have all the details in it, but enough to to kind of go over our discussion here. We did go ahead and post an anticipated job last Friday on March twenty-eighth. We already have three applicants in our pool, which is great, considering the job's only been up for three days, so that's that's really good. And they're strong candidates, too, they're legitimate, good candidates, so. So I think we'll have a good pool, you know, and that's the hope, you know, we're trying to build a culture here in a place where people want to be, and I'm hoping that this is, you know, one of those positives of that, and we see that kind of manifest here. And what's important about getting that up last week is it can get us to an end date of April eleventh. We don't need big windows for these type of jobs, which I know maybe sounds backwards, but it's not, people are ready to jump when they're open. So like, we want two weeks in and out, and let's get our candidates and get kind of going, which will lead us to some sort of application review meeting, tend to be scheduled April fifteenth, have a search committee come in, review applicants, and start getting the pool of candidates that we want to come in and do physical interviews with, that we would do that first round of interviews, tend to be scheduled for April twenty-second and twenty-third. This is important, why I think it's important and why we wanted to get that date, that anticipated job posted is so we can get the first set of interviews done before April vacation, so we can get going. You know, we get our candidates at this exact moment, I don't think we're competing against any other open high school jobs, but that means some have already been filled, so we're kind of, you know, it's the cycle of it all, so. So that allows us to do those first round of interviews that that first week before, or that week before April vacation, and then come back after April vacation, that first week back, and kind of do a round two interviews with what I would call finalists at that point, to kind of have them come into the district for for a day, part of a day, tour of the school, meet with panel of staff, panel of students, panel of parents, guardians, administration, so on and so forth. One last final kind of interview, interview, I say check-in with our kind of candidate at that point with me, so we can make sure we have reference checks in in line and paperwork and everything else, and we're kind of locked in, so we can bring a nomination to the, to you all, the school board, on the second meeting in in May, Wednesday, the twenty-first, for that candidate that we kind of want to go forward with, so that's kind of the timeline we're we're looking at, trying to do this responsibly, but also quickly. We don't want to fall too far behind, we don't want to lose candidates if other jobs start to open up in this kind of nature. Like I said, we're the only one open right now, and this is a efficient timeline, so I think we would be ahead of anything else that could potentially open in the next couple of weeks. So we're in good shape on that. Search committee kind of just put down possible positions and ideas, I think there's fourteen listed here, we don't have to stay with that, open to any other suggestions as people come and go. We want to mix people, some some people on our administrative team who who know what it's like to be an administrator, obviously teacher representatives, support staff representatives from from the high school, one of you to join us during during this kind of first round. Some parent guardians, a couple of parent guardians to be part of that, and a couple of students to be part of that as well. So we have kind of diverse from a number of different stakeholders kind of be part of that that initial interview, kind of search committee. And then, you know, it's pretty straightforward, standard first round type of interviews, you bring in, I would say, up to six candidates, but you kind of let the pool dictate that for you, maybe you don't need six, maybe you really decide between six and seven and you figure something out, I don't know, you let let the pool speak to you on that point. You do your typical, you know, ten-question-ish kind of initial interview, tell us about yourself, background, so on and so forth, give us your leadership style and some sort of written communication as part of that, to see how people communicate with the written word, usually a standard question, you're sending an email out to the community about house drills, right? Something like that, see how they communicate and how they write. And then that round two interview, we can talk about specifics on what that looks like, there's been different capacities. I know recently when I did this last year through superintendent search, it was a full, full day, you know, you spent a a long, long time in district doing everything. I think you can be a little bit shorter on a principal, but I think you should bridge the school day in the afternoon, so you can get them, see them in the building when the building is active and session, but also have the opportunity for parents and guardians and and teachers and students outside of the school day to be able to sit on a panel and have some sort of question and answer with your candidate. You know, you do that whole whole thing of two or three final candidates, and then, like I said, just a final, kind of check-in with the superintendent, which I guess is me, making sure we have all our references fully completed, we have all of our kind of, start talking about salary and those type of things with with the candidate and stuff to make sure that's aligned before we bring it in front of the board, so.
When we did the vice principal, we did it a little different, right? Didn't we do three groups and the vice principals went kind of room to room?
Everyone does things differently, so I'm open to any suggestions, this was just from my experiences, honestly, and and talking to a couple of people. House searches can be a little different.
Before, I'm going to say it again, right? This feels extensive.
I mean, everything.
Superintendent, you, I get it. But for like a principal, I mean, there has to be an element of trust for the people that we've hired to make decisions, and this just seems a bit over the top.
Like, what about it?
What about it? Everything about it. Like, you're bringing it, like, if I'm the, if I'm the candidate, my my reaction to this is like, and maybe it's just normal in education, and maybe this is just me looking at it from business perspective, but this is like, what the heck?
I think, I think it's. Yeah, so I think depending, I think for a principal, a high school principal, this is okay, right? But I will say, when I was hired as a high school principal, I had one interview, and then I had a really bizarre conversation with the superintendent where I wasn't sure if he offered me the job or not, but that's a whole other story for another time. Funny story, but just a whole other story. And so that was that, and I remember, you know, after the fact, talking to people, I was like, man, that was crazy, you just did one interview and you moved on? They were like, well, we had all this other stuff planned, but we we felt good with you after the first interview, so you can kind of pivot. You can always scale back if you have someone strong enough that everyone's just like, well, there's our person, right? Like, you know, we don't need to waste time, we don't want to lose this person, whatever the case may be. But I do think what you get with the second round, like, I'm a big advocate of seeing how a person in this type of role interacts during the school day. Like, what do they do, who do they stop to talk to, how do they approach people, like, who do they look in the eye, who do they don't? Do they talk to the kids, right? Like, seeing that kind of interaction that you can't get just that one round.
Now they know what to do.
Well. Frankly. And if that's true, then good, that's what they should be doing, right? Like, you want people who are going to do that homework and do that research and pick up those things, like, that's important stuff. I I do think sometimes we get, we, the collective and education, get a little over the top in how we do some of these processes, but for a high school principal, I do think you need a couple of rounds and a kind of a involved, involved kind of process, so.
Yeah, I.
Gauntlet.
I know you, I mean, I know you just acknowledged that the, for the superintendent, you know, that makes sense. Having gone through that process, though, it is extensive and exhausting, but I will say that I think a lot of like positive came through that. There's a lot that throughout the process you kind of hash through and pick up on, and it, I think Brian is a great example of how that works, because we ended up with a phenomenal candidate that checks off all the boxes of what we really need.
In your opinion.
Still T B D, right?
So, you know, honestly, I think, you know, particularly where culture is so incredibly important in a, in a, you know, sector where there's not a shortage of jobs for people, for us to be able to retain talent, I think it's important for us to find the right people, so. I know there's other board member comments, my other, my other comment, definitely, and I'll, I'll stop talking, is are we being nimble enough in timeline and reactive enough in timeline to make the right decision quickly? Like, I see this and we're a month and a half out, and I'm hearing, ah, you got to be quick, and I don't see quick in anything about this.
Yeah, I think we have to be conscious of how things unfold, right? Like, we are check, EdJobs is the main site in in New Hampshire Education that you check for these type of jobs, right? We are the only high school principal job open, so if you're targeting being a high school principal, we are the job right now, and I think we're seeing that. And even, again, three days, three candidates, and like very valid candidates, right? And very different, you know, so I think we're going to attract people, and people who want the job, not just are looking for a job, right? Like, if I'm looking at these candidate, I don't want to speak out of turn, right? Because I've seen them, but like, I, and maybe I'm totally wrong, but I think there are people who are applying for this job, not necessarily a job, looking at that kind of their profile and stuff like that.
So, multiple round interviews, panel interviews, as you get hired in my world is normal. The only thing that is, how big are you expecting for the panel? Because like, I I've gone into interviewed for low-level jobs and all of a sudden I've got like V Ps want to be in it, is like, I'm hiring an engineer one. I don't need a VP in the room with me.
Yeah, I think that's a good question, like, we were talking about this with S A U people earlier today, right? Like, we were just in the office talking about what this would look like, and one of the things we we don't want to do is to like, open it up free-flowing, open the auditorium, put everyone on stage and like do that, that's probably a step too far for this particular position. But having a panel of of parents, right, say there's ten to twelve, you know, whatever the number is that you can get people to come in, represent diverse kids, you may, a couple of parents who don't have high schoolers yet that might might have high schoolers in a few years, because hopefully we're hiring someone who's going to be here, you know, for for a number of years, current high school parents, a mix of of kind of community members there, and like that kind of more controlled kind of setting, like, you're going to have some questions, you're going to meet your two or three finalists at that point, and then you're going to kind of report back out, and it's going to be not hours, it's going to be like you have them for like a half hour, right? Like, something kind of shorter like that, so.
The, the one experience that I have, and again, this is just from my world, is your panelists should ask the same questions to each candidate.
Yep, exactly, and that's why when you get out of that.
Off the rails.
Kind of auditorium, like kind of free-fall, free-for-all, you know, you can kind of, I was definitely in a setting once for for a high school principal job, where I definitely got a different set of questions than the other person, and that was fine because of the dynamics, it was a school I had worked at previously and and the other person hadn't, so like, I understood it on the same level, but it's still weird, right? Like, you're getting a different set of questions, like, so yeah, you want to kind of control it so it's the same type of environment for all your candidates.
So are you saying you would have ten to twelve parents be part of this group?
Up to, you know, maybe less, now, I say that because even without formally announcing the search committee yet, I've already got people reaching out, and I want people involved. But think about a high school principal, right? Like, you have to run a gauntlet at times, you know, like, it is a job where you need to wear a lot of different hats and talk to a lot of different people and communicate effectively in a number of different ways, right? And it it's different, and I'm biased because I was a high school principal, but it is different than, say, in an assistant principal position, like, it's really, really different, and you need to see how kind of people handle those different stakeholders, and maybe tends too much, you know? And that's the feedback I'd like from the board here, you know, if you think a smaller panel is probably more effective and efficient there, like, certainly, we can adjust that. I want the community to feel involved in this decision, you know, so, and again, based upon people already reaching out, being like, hey, can I, can I be a part of something here? You know, I want to make sure people feel heard and be appreciated as part of the process.
I think as long as you ask the same questions, and a lot of times what we did in past, I think we did it with Mr. Mitchell, we've done it, I think, with Ms. Grantham, send in your questions ahead of time, there's a Google form with a deadline, so they're submitted and asked, and then they're vetted and, and, yeah. It it keeps it simple, and people can observe, but they're not there to necessarily ask their own questions as much as they're there to just listen.
Yeah, usually in that type of setting, I've seen that you have like a facilitator for each of these panels, right?
Yeah.
Where they're the kind of the one asking the initial question, like, anyone can jump in with like a relative follow-up question, you know? But like, like, if you were like, well, do you like the Red Sox or Yankees? And they said Yankees, and if someone else want to be like, defend that, because they're using these stupid bats to hit a thousand, right? Like, you know, like, you need to know, you got to have a follow-up then, but like, yeah, you. Yeah, you want those set questions. You want your person to kind of, kind of lead the charge there and that kind of.
And I'd love to just turn it over to our student representatives. We'll put you guys on the spot for a minute, right? Knowing that we're potentially gonna be in the market for looking for a, a high school principal, what's the one question that you'd wanna ask a new high school principal coming in?
Really couldn't run the spot.
Um, probably like ask like how involved like he would be like with the students and like. Obviously like with, like he has to be like the like adult or he or she has to be the adult, but like. Getting involved like in like Spring Fest or in like dressing up in a Santa suit and going on stage during our tree lighting assembly or things like that. And I feel like, like really connecting with the students, like how important that is to them and like how like personable they are in a way.
Okay, alright.
I would just ask them if they're gonna make the students' life easier. I don't know. I feel like.
You guys are really struggling.
Like if you're asking a student, like, I feel like they have to ask the question, like what they're gonna do for the students, so. So that's what I would ask.
Okay. There you go. Appreciate that. Thank you.
First two questions on the list, right there.
There we go.
That's good.
Alright, anything else on this one?
No.
In terms of board representation, I know Heidi, you had volunteered.
I'm happy to do it. I did check these dates against my work calendar and blocked them just in case, but if anybody else wants it, it's all you.
I'm out, so.
All means Heidi.
Okay.
All you, Heidi.
Alright. On it. I did. That's why.
We appreciate it. Thank you very much.
I'm happy to do it.
Yeah. Alright, uh, next up we have Spanish.
So I wanted to provide kind of an update on Spanish because, uh, historically, uh, Jen jumped in at any point. We've had struggles hiring for Spanish positions, uh, both at the high school and at the school this year. I would say we hired late both of those positions. Um, as I was coming in last year and, uh, that's not a unique Litchfield situation. Previous district I have spoken of, we really struggled to hire Spanish teachers there. I, I just think it's, it's, uh, hard to ha, to hire world language teachers right now, period. We do have, uh, and I wanna provide an updated board because this is the update. We have a candidate, um, that we're gonna interview for Spanish. We have one candidate coming for the position. We've had it posted now. Three weeks, four weeks at this point, four weeks. And, uh, they're a legitimate candidate, so we're gonna interview them and kind of see how that goes. But we're also, I'm assuming interviewing for every Spanish job that isn't manageable, cause there's a ton of jobs open, right? Cause no one can find Spanish teachers. So we're likely gonna come to the board next meeting with one of two things, either a Spanish teacher nomination. Or a plan to do Spanish differently at the middle school, because we can't get into the, the cycle of. Just scrambling, not doing anything, not making any decisions, waiting till late August and then coming up with something, right? We need to be proactive, cause this is a legit, in my opinion, a legitimate problem. In education, there just are not world language teachers. We have to start looking at these issues differently and approach it differently. Um, so I just wanna prep the board for that. Like we're gonna come either next meeting with a nomination or a different plan for, for middle school Spanish. You know, and we're gonna, if that different plan, we've talked about it. We've actually been talking about it. Dating back to last summer when there was a possibility that we weren't gonna have, um, a Spanish teacher at the middle school. Um, you know, last, uh, summer when we were, we were getting close to the school year. It would involve online education, utilization of Velax, possibly some other things as well. That can't replace an actual teacher. We acknowledge that, but the reality is that we may not have a teacher. We may not have a candidate for this. Um, I think when we last looked, there was fourteen openings of Spanish in middle school or high school in the state right now. And again, we have one candidate and I'm assuming that candidate is not solely applying for here, probably applying at these other jobs as well, so. Um, we will move forward with that, but I wanna prep the board that will probably have a serious discussion next meeting, um, about the state of Spanish at the middle school and stuff, so. Any questions or things you want us to kind of think about before that next meeting?
Um, I gotta think about that.
I think you should, right? Like I, and, um, I, you know, engage in that conversation of what that is. Like there are pros and cons, that there are definite cons, there are pros, but there are definite cons to, um, doing things in a different way, so.
One question, I mean, is, when I went to middle school, which was junior high at the time. There was an introduction to world languages, so it wasn't language specific. It involved an introduction to Latin. Which is the language I ended up taking eight years of. Useless.
Wow, good for you.
Um, and then French, Spanish, whatever. Is that something that would require a world language teacher? Or is that something because it's so more on the basic side of things that another teacher could do?
It's a great question. In my, I would have to do a little more research, but I've actually been part of groups that have looked at that. And I know, uh, in my previous district, when the middle school was having the same exact problem, we're facing a situation that maybe they weren't gonna be able to find a language teacher. They talked about that language teacher idea and they were gonna utilize a social studies teacher to do that instruction.
Cause it was more historical background of different cultures.
Culture, exploring culture, right? And it can fall into that kind of social studies umbrella and someone certified in that area because you're not speaking. You're not teaching the language per se, the grammar, the spelling and everything. You're talking about the culture and the influence and the historical knowledge of it and stuff like that. So it is that kind of introduction to different, different cultures, different, and you can do some preliminary language stuff, right? Um, and it can be broad, right? You can spend some time on, on French in France and stuff like that.
Language, I mean.
Uh, look, I, we have a whole other discussion and I think sign language is, is, is the way to go with world language, period, but that's another discussion for another time.
I agree.
Um, and, uh, yeah, so there are different things you can kind of explore on, but I, I think, and you know, just kind of. I don't wanna get too far down the rabbit hole because this person could come on board and then this whole conversation is, is moot. Um, but, you know, we, we look at language, education. Um, and we gotta think about what, what, what the point of it is, right? Like and just be honest with ourselves, what it is. And I'm pro world language. I don't want that to be that I'm, I'm anti world language. I think it'd be, I would love to be able to speak Spanish fluently, but it, you know, I can't. I took my three years of Spanish, cause I had to take my three years of Spanish and like. Moved on, right? Like I don't know if, if, if that's, you know, I would, you know, perfect world have us introduce, you know, Spanish in kindergarten and teach it K through twelve. That's not gonna happen. I understand that, but, um, that, that's awesome, right? So, you know, what are we trying to accomplish with our language program and when is the appropriate time to kind of start that build and? And what are most of our students utilizing that language for? You know, it used to be the rule of thumb and kind of assuade a little bit that you need three years of language to get into college. That used to be kind of the unofficial, kind of unofficial thing. That kind of went away a little bit. UNH was advising that wasn't as important if you were, you know, specializing in other classes, right? Like say engineering classes or something like that. But now the pendulum seems to be swinging back where they want you to take language, right? So it, it's kind of like, you wanna make sure your kids are, have opportunity, the appropriate opportunities and everything, so. It's a complicated issue. I think, you know, thinking about it, being ready to kind of dive into it potentially next meeting. I think we might have a lengthy discussion about it, so.
Just to kind of know what Brian is sharing is, do I, am I, if I come back here, I think that my phone's picking up, but, um. We have had in my four years, we've had a year of no Spanish. We had a year of Spanish that was immersion Spanish. We had a year of, a year, a half year of Spanish and enough, and having them come in on the pinch. And then this year was a last minute punt for Spanish. So it has not allowed us to have any continuity of program to be able to feed the high school. So I'm just concerned that we're gonna be. Depending on the candidate, I have not met this person yet, who was able to get an interview on the doctor for Friday, so. Um, hopefully we'll be better informed the other Friday, but I'm concerned with that continuity to be able to lead the high school for them to be successful in high school program as it's designed.
That's my initial reaction and thank you for bringing that up, right? Is even if this is a great candidate, right? Is it the, is it the right choice for us? Because of that continuity. It's, it's one thing to fill a gap for a year, but if that person leaves after a year, what, what are we really solving?
Yes.
Right.
And I think it's a hard discussion, cause I think. People. May assume you're not supportive of world language, but that's not what the discussion is. It's trying to have the reality-based conversation that like. It's just really hard in today's world to fill these positions, right? If you can honestly are fluent in, in Spanish, you can get paid a lot more money to do a lot of other things, right? Like, and I think we're just not seeing people go into world language instruction, right? Like there's not a, a lot of young teachers who are getting into that side of teaching. We still see people getting into English education, elementary education, math education, but that world language education. It's hard to get, get young teachers in there, right? And you almost have to accidentally fall into one who's, it's not their intent to do it and, you know, and just get lucky once in a while.
And from a programmatic perspective, and again, to your point, it's a feeder into Campbell. And how can we keep the program sustainable and running into Campbell when it's inconsistent? It downstream, you can't.
Like in some ways, if you, and again, we'll have a lengthier discussion possibly next time. If you were to cut bait in middle school, you might actually strengthen your high school program. You know, because you're gonna have more consistent Spanish one education for all your students who are involved in the program, right? The downside is you're probably not getting to AP Spanish, right? Unless some kids are doing some things on the side. Again, we can talk more next, next meeting, but.
So why is it that you can fill a high school Spanish one teacher and not a middle school?
Have you ever?
Yeah. I think.
I'm just like.
I, I think it's this, I think it's the, the focus and the serious, you know, getting down to the content. High school teachers in my experience are more about their subject matter, the passion for their subject matter and that's what they're all about. Whereas a middle school person is also passionate about their subject matter, but also has to be into the quirky nature of the kids at middle school.
Yeah.
It takes a unique individual to work in a middle school. I'm gonna say that.
Yeah.
And I think when you hire.
But it does.
I think two things. Um, you're, you're barely able to hire high school world language teachers, right? Like it's like an incremental step above, right? Like we hired the high school Spanish teacher, I think in August last year too. Like we were facing a situation where we weren't gonna have a high school, that second high school Spanish teacher last year. Um, and then one kind of, we got really lucky, simply just mad, no other way to put it, right? And I do think some of the draw of teaching at the high school level versus the middle school level, at the middle school level, you're just doing that introductionary Spanish, right? So if you have a passion for the language, like you're never really gonna do it, right? Like you're introducing the language, you're dealing with classroom behaviors, you're doing, you're living the middle school life, which. God bless you all who live the middle school life, but like, um, it's different than the high school life where you get to immerse yourself in the language. And you're not gonna exclusively teach Spanish one. You'll teach Spanish one, probably a section of Spanish three, maybe even a, a higher level Spanish class, right? So you have that versatility and what you're teaching and everything, so. That's why I think you get a little incrementally higher chance of getting high school, but even then it's, it's, it's a struggle to find, find teachers.
Thank you. Alright, anything else at the moment for LMS? Again, this is another one, Spanish and LMS, another one that I think you just have to kind of sit on and think through. Okay, uh, school board calendar.
So we brought this back, um, just to finalize the dates of the, of the, of the school board meetings. We put other tentative meetings on here just that we can adapt once we get final. Final word, for example, the budget committee, uh, meetings that we'll, we'll attend in November, December and everything. But the blue school board meetings here are the school board meetings. When we last talked about this, I believe it was two meetings ago. We talked about the need to whether to have two, uh, meetings in December. We did leave the second meeting on December for now, just so we can reserve the space and, and the schedule and everything. And if we need to rearrange that schedule as next year approaches, we can certainly do that. Uh, we have locked in the deliberative days here. We didn't necessarily lock in on which of the days we'll do our deliberative, uh, next, but we make sure we wanna book. Uh, everything correctly, you know, make sure auditorium and gym are both available as. The elementary books, uh, their, their show next year, let's stay away from those weekends. So everyone coordinates here. So we blocked them off in nice and green, so everyone knows the dates, um, and making sure.
Happy Valentine's.
Yeah, seriously.
Well, we can do it, we can do it on the seventh, right? Like we, we talk about that, we'll, we'll talk with the town, what their thoughts, uh, I mean. We can, we can set this stuff now if we so choose, right? Like and just use the seventh. I know we're gonna talk to, um, talk to the town, you know, at some point and get this all squared away. But by statute, those are the two dates we can have. That's the window that we can have it and you typically do it on Saturday in this district, so those are the two Saturdays. Um, so what we're looking for tonight is final approval of the school board meeting dates. That's all you have to approve on this calendar. Even though we have other things listed on the calendar.
It's the April vacation date, right? I feel like that's the next week. I feel like that's.
Be the next week now that you're saying that.
Yeah, it is the next.
It is the next week. It goes in the May. We have to adjust that, sorry.
Nope, that's okay. And that's not what we're voting on anyway, but I'm looking at it going, that's early.
You're right, a hundred percent right, yep. Oops.
I mean, I would love it if it lined up with Massachusetts eventually, but.
How about Mass lines with us?
I, I don't care which one.
Because the later one's better.
Same week.
The later one is better. Just for my two cents.
Okay, um, just on the school board calendar, right? Especially as we get into the later months of the year and thinking about all things budget. Um, the budget committee is also going through their meeting calendar process right now. They are set to review that at their, uh, in April, at their, at their April meeting later this month. They have asked, as we think about again, the, the, the meetings, I guess in yellow. Yeah, the budget sessions. They have asked that we. Try to, um. Wrap up all the budget in warrant meetings. Prior to the end of the year. I don't know how reasonable.
They actually asked for November, didn't they?
Well, I mean, essentially they, they, they want to go into January with the perspective of what all the warrant articles are, what the default budget is, right? So they have more time, notably with default, um, to understand what it is and, and be able to ask questions. They just felt to. Do, right, first time going through it. They just want more time to be able to go through it and, and be prepared going into budget hearing. So, I don't know, I asked for their grace, right? Because we may have a big ticket item and that requires a lot of planning, it requires bond, all of that stuff. And we don't have any sense of what that process is going to be like quite yet, and that might take more time than we're thinking through here.
Yeah.
So.
I think we'd be able to get our, our proposed budget, default budget and non-GMS related warrant articles. Pretty squared away in an appropriate amount of time. We'll have it a year under our belt, process under our belt. Um, Julie spent, uh, part of, went yesterday, yesterday, last week?
Monday.
Monday?
Mm-hmm.
Whatever, they're all running together. Um, with a crew at Goffstown with Doug and, and then Scott, the, the BA over at, at Goffstown to kind of talk about. Ways to, to not do the default differently, but in the system more conveniently, so we can do that stuff quicker next fall and stuff like that. So we're already taking steps to be a little more proactive on those things on our part as well, so.
So we'll see how it goes towards the November, December timeframe and what the budget committee comes up with for their calendar. Um, so we might see maybe some adjustments here. I'm not sure.
Yep.
But we'll go for that.
Yeah, we were just guessing on the budget stuff and, but the blue is what you need to approve, just the school board meeting dates, so.
Want to make a motion to approve the school board calendar dates?
Motion by Ms. Ains.
Second.
Second by Mr. Drew Whit. Any additional discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, that carries five zero. And I will be sure to get these dates over to, um, Mr. Bredal.
Uh, Renee sent you a corrected one, so we have that school calendar.
Okay.
Correct, so you have.
And just so we can get the, the room locked in.
Yep.
And there's no questions. And we'll turn it over for business administration update tonight. Thank you.
Alright, sure. Um, with regard to the financials, one thing I just wanted to, um, point out for transparency. Um, under the transfers, there was, um, there were two transfers over five thousand. Uh, the reason that we didn't come to the board is because it was for the, um, school psychologist. And when we had, um, asked for that transfer for up to sixty thousand, we were gonna do it as needed. Um, so those, those were already, um, a part of that total. So there were two transfers, um. There was one for thirty, I'm sorry, one for twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-two and another for five thousand, four dollars. Um, and those were with, related to the psych services. Um, the only other things I had, um, for, uh, we did receive our financial audit, uh, for the fiscal year ending, um, for, um, twenty twenty-four. Um, I did attach that. It's also on our website. Um, just wanted to make sure everyone had access to that information. I also have hard copies if anybody would like one. There were, um, a couple of minor, uh, findings, mainly with regard to, um, purchasing. Um, untimely deposits and student activity accounts. And all of those items have been addressed, um, with our administration, so hopefully we'll be in better shape next year. With regard to solar, I wanted to give an update on that. We did, um, hear from, um, Kay this morning that. The electrical inspection has been, um, scheduled for tomorrow morning, actually, um, at LMS. So, um, if we pass that inspection and everything moves forward, um, they are, um, Danny McGridda is prepared to. Deliver the report to Eversource, which will start the clock for them. deliver the report to Eversource, which will start the clock for them to, um, give us the approval and then, um, await the new meter. So there we are with solar.
I'm sorry, what was that dating?
When are they coming?
Yeah.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
And then if I recall from the conversations, that clock to get the new meter is ten days.
Ten days upon, yes.
And then once the new meter is installed, then it's additional?
There's a little more testing that has to be done.
Right, but I wanna say it's a short window, it's another, like, maybe ten days.
Correct, it's, yes, it's, it's not long.
So maybe by the end of May now.
Maybe.
What was February is now May.
I think it was originally May, though, a few years ago. Just thirty-six months late.
All right, thank you for the update. The budget committee was actually asking about an update as well, so I'll be sure to pass this on. Um, the, yeah, um, Mr. Olson, the new budget committee member is very interested in all things solar, so I'm sure this would be a good pick. Curriculum instruction, Dr. Teo.
All right, so, um, just a quick, um, update. The curriculum review committee met, um, last week and we are, um, we are still going through, I'm not last week before, self-lending, um, so we are going through, um, the new curriculum review cycle that we have instituted, um, which is more robust than previous. Um, and we are currently mapping out what, um, subjects should go in what phase. We sent out a survey to, um, all of the different departments, asking for their feedback after they reviewed the survey or the review of the phases to see where they would place themselves. And now we're kind of going through that and seeing, um, knowing that everyone is kind of in an element of, of phase one, going through it with me as I go to each, um, department and me with all the teachers to take them through the vertical curriculum alignment. Um, so everybody is kind of in a phase one. And then also where else are they falling? So we're mapping that out right now, which has been a very interesting, um, process and conversation to, um, hash out. Cause like, RUAs have not done a curriculum, anything for like ten years. Um, so that's been a lot of conversation and it's been amazing. I started the vertical alignments with them a couple of weeks ago. I've met with art and now PE already, and those meetings have been fabulous and they're very thankful to actually be getting some attention, which they deserve attention. They provide a great experience for our students. And, um, so we've really been diving into that work, so that's been a good thing. And then.
Where the drumsticks came into play earlier?
Yeah. I haven't done music, oh, I will be.
Party of, party of drumming, right?
Yes, party of drumming, I will be bringing my drumsticks to music. Carolyn will be so happy. That was a missed opportunity, I could've brought it to PE.
Right.
Next time. Um, so yeah, those have been going really well. Um, and then we also, um, implemented a new novel and supplemental text process, um, because it was kind of a lengthy process, having to bring it to the school board for approval. And teachers are trying to be really responsive to their kids and their needs. So, um, I drafted a form based on the old form that was there and then, um, brought it to the committee, we talked over a lot of things. And, um, then we rolled it out to the staff, so they'll be, if somebody wants to institute. So this came where a high school English teacher wanted to do a book club. And I was looking through, I was like, oh my goodness, we have to wait to take it to the board for approval. And she really wanted to, like, start her book clubs. So, um, that's how that whole thing came about. And we decided as a committee, like, we have school board representatives on, on the, um, committee. So they're gonna fill out the form, the form will go to the principal, the principal will review it. And if the principal feels like it should go on, she'll, they'll tell the teacher to pass it on to the committee representative. And then the committee will review it and then give a final approval for, um, the novel or supplemental text that the teachers wanna use. Um, and it'll be, the committee is awesome, all the members are very responsive, so it's a pretty quick turnaround. Um, so that the student, and we still have the checks and balances, making sure that appropriate materials are being, um, put into student hands, but also in a more streamlined process. So that was some really good work that we just rolled out. Um, any questions on that update?
Uh, I have feedback on something, something else.
Okay.
If it's, if you're ready for it.
Go ahead.
Uh, so I did, I took advantage of the, uh, second round of parent-teacher conferences, which I really appreciated. I think it's really nice to be able to get in and have an idea of what the heck's going on. Um, and so I'm gonna butcher this, with the standardized testing that we did was the, for elementary school, was the SASS?
Not yet, we haven't done it yet.
What was the, well, no, iReady?
iReady diagnostic is.
iReady diagnostic, okay, sorry, iReady. Um, and one thing that you have implemented was, uh, encouraging the teachers to do something with the mod.
The modulators?
The modulators, okay, so I'm getting the terminology.
Nice, oh, nice.
The modulators, uh, I got some great feedback from my daughter's teacher, um, saying that one thing that they've taken from that, or what they're able to realize from that, was, uh, where they're falling short. And so one thing they discovered, for example, was that, the third graders at least, when there's an answer that says all of the above, they're not understanding that. So the content they understood, this was actually a, a testing component. Um, so excellent job, because I think that these are things that we need to know and I, and I'm glad to hear the teacher saying, gee, we were able to use this and figure this out.
Yes, I'm glad, thank you for that feedback, cause, um, those are, there's so many components to that assessment, not only in terms of knowledge and subject area, but just using the interface and the types of questions that are asked. We don't necessarily ask questions in the same way and we need to vary our questioning, um, in instruction on our classroom assessments on a lot of different things, so that students are familiarized with seeing that variety of questioning and how you respond to those things and taking them through all of those components is so vital. So, um, yeah, the modulators have been, have been like, and we're gonna have a, a more system, like, a process for implementing them sooner, like, in the fall, too, so that it's not just, I don't want assessment, and we talked about this last time when I was talking about data, I don't want assessment to become, like, it's this big, huge thing that's happening, cause that just increases test anxiety, like, oh my, it, you know, it's like, oh, okay, this is something that we've been doing. We've been on this site, we know what this looks like, okay, now it's time to just show what we know. Um, so it's more normalized and, um, the students have a more, like, they're more idiosyncratic, they're more familiarized with the platform and also the types of questions. And how do, what does all of the above mean? Cause to a third grader, they're like, uh, yes.
Or if they even read that far, they see the, they know that the first answer's right, they're like, oh.
Right.
Uh, but I mean, from my, from my perspective, it seems like with this, we're able to not only evaluate where we're having issues with comprehension of how to take a test, but also subject comprehension. And also, we're gonna be able to better evaluate iReady as a, you know, diagnostic tool for us and what, what it means and.
Mm-hmm, and you were right when you say modulators, that was, that is the SASS.
Okay.
It's the state assessment system. So I'm so excited that people are, like, using the modulators, we're gonna.
Well, I can't speak, I don't know if everyone is, I can tell you that my daughter's teacher, who's a rock star, is.
Yes, she is, yes. And I know, I look at the dashboard, there are people in pockets using them. Um, I've had countless conversations with middle school, um, people that are using them. Um, and there's, there's a lot of benefits to using them, cause I keep telling people, it's not teaching to the test. We teach according to the Common Core State Standards. That is how we develop our curriculum. And this is a one-to-one assessment on those standards, where we can see where are the students according to this standard. You wanna know? Give them a modular and see where they're at. Um, so that's, there's so many key benefits to using those.
Just wanted to say thank you, it's nice to see it in practice, working.
Thank you. Um, okay, so the last thing, um, last week I went to an US conference, um, cause another facet of, you know, my job is grants. Fun fact, um, and the grants are, there's a lot of changes that, um, are coming down, um, in a lot of different ways, like fast and furiously in how you write your grant activities to get, um, access to the funds that are allocated to our district. Um, in Title One, we have Title One, Title Two and Title Four A. Um, and those are the, there was a lot of information, by the, my brain was like, woo, right, by the end of it. But, um, it's okay, we'll get through it, I'm waiting to do, the consolidated application came out for next year. Um, but I'm, we're all kind of on a pause right now, cause we're not quite sure where our title funds will be, um, in the next year or so. So we're, all the districts are talking, like, we're kind of waiting to do the extra work, cause it's a lot of stuff that you have to do that goes into it, um, until we figure out where the state, where the landscape is in terms of title funding and what we'll get from that. But, um, I still continue to write activities for the funds that we have allocated to us. Um, Title One, really streamlining and tightening up processes there, because Title One, um, was, we had some dollars left on the table last year. And I'm like, no, no, we don't leave dollars on the table in grant funding, we used it all. And I was able to get a carryover, like, I think I reported on that earlier in the year. So our Title One team is, is there, we're all laughing, cause I meet with them monthly. And they are like, we're having, like, we have, can we do this? Can we do that? I'm like, yes, let's do all these things, cause we're supposed to be helping the, like, our most needy students. And, you know, you need all of those things to support them. So it's been an exciting time of putting together shopping lists and things of, um, wait, we can do that? Yes, let's do that. So that was, um, just a quick update on the, the grants. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Oh, I wanted to say one more thing, I forgot. Um, so I was talking with Dan earlier, um, and he just wanted me to do a plug. Child find is coming next Monday, the seventh. So if any parents, um, feel like they need their, um, children who are not school age yet to be screened, they're gonna be at GMS on Monday from twelve to two. So bring them on over.
All right, thank you again.
Yep.
Next up on the agenda is our public minutes from March nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes?
Yes. Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion by Mr. Schumaker, second by Mr. Krasinski, additional discussion? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No, I'm gonna abstain, sorry.
Four of us aye.
Most abstained, that carries four zero one. Here we go. And now we have, uh, some new business tonight. We have the school psychologist restructure proposal.
Yeah, I'm gonna have, uh, Ms. Poehler come up, our director of student services, I almost called her Dr. Poehler, um, but I did not.
Thank you for not doing that.
She gets it vicarious.
I, I often joke, it's the easiest degree I got out of my degrees, so I just had to show up, so I really.
That's good.
Um, so Sarah's gonna, uh, has been working, um, on some different things and, and looking how we can more efficiently, uh, deal with special ed services, and this is the first, uh, kind of domino in that kind of effect, so I'll turn things over to her.
Yeah, thank you.
Welcome.
Um, so I did, um, attach, um, kind of my outline, um, for all of you. Um, so I'm obviously not gonna read through it to you guys, but just kind of give you, um, some overview. Um, so currently, um, we have a school psychologist position in the district. It is full year, um, so from July first through June thirtieth. Um, my proposal, um, is to split that and to make it into two, um, school year positions. Um, I think that, for a multitude of reasons, um, so this position has been open since, um, our former school psychologist resigned in October of twenty twenty-four. Um, we've been very, uh, lucky to be able to contract with somebody, um, and they've helped us to be able to stay within all of the timelines that we need to for special ed, thankfully. Um, but as you know, that's a, you know, contracting's costly, um, and we really would prefer, obviously, to hire somebody, um, in the district. Um, so I, I looked at, at a lot of things, um, obviously keeping in mind also that we're going into a default budget. Um, I, I would like to restructure the position into two, um, school year positions, meaning that they would work from August, um, to the end of the school year and not throughout, um, July and the beginning of August. Um, I will say, I spoke to, uh, many of the other districts and other directors in the South Central Region, um, and the majority of their school psychologist positions are school year, um, so they're ten month. Um, with some additional days required, the beginning of the, um, beginning of the school year, end of the school year, just kind of depending on the district. Um, and also, just having witnessed, um, the caseload, um, both as a teacher when I was at LMS last year and, and now from this position as a director, um, it's a lot. Um, and, and it doesn't sound like it would be a lot, there's only three schools, but, you know, the amount of, um, time, which I kind of outlined, and again, I'm not gonna read through all how I kind of broke out the time. Um, so this person, um, primarily does all of our, um, evaluations for special ed. Um, so that's counting, um, the three-year reevaluations as long, as well as referrals. Um, so I did some digging, I, I counted the amount of reevaluations we have this year planned, um, and also reached out to get the number of referrals that we've had. Um, so in a nutshell, um, in looking at the amount of school days per year, um, working at seven hours a day, that's one thousand two hundred forty-six hours in a school year that this person has. Um, I broke out for the reevaluations and for the referrals, the amount of time that that takes to, from the beginning and, right? So from beginning meeting, all the way through the conducting the evaluation, scoring, report writing, coming to the meeting after, um, the consultation that's required with the staff members, um, and then through another miscellaneous responsibilities. So being able to consult with the special ed staff is really important. Um, maybe not about a case that's in referral or a case that's in reevaluation, but, you know, hey, I have this kid, I'm seeing these things in the classroom, what do you suggest that I do or what are your thoughts? Um, being able to meet with myself and then also attend monthly SAU meetings, um, and those are just the ones that I could, miscellaneous responsibilities I could think of, and I'm sure there's others that come up as they arise. Um, so adding all of that up, that comes to one thousand four hundred eighty hours out of the school year, um, which is, um, a two hundred thirty-four hour difference from the amount of time that's allotted. Um, I do know at the elementary school, um, sometimes the school psychologist in the past has attended five oh four or like student or, um, cat or SST meetings, everyone calls it something different, so if it's the wrong school, I apologize. Um, consulting with the mental he- uh, health staff, travel, um, and any other consultation to the staff is required. Um, so I kind of broke it down, um, and explained, you know, the amount of students that we have currently, they're identified among the three buildings, along with students at St. Francis and the students we have out of district. Um, my thought is to have the, uh, the, the position split into an elementary school year, um, school psych, so pre-K through four, and then also secondary, so five through twelve. Um, the reason being is that elementary school is typically where you see the most referrals. Um, that's hopefully where you're catching a lot of the concerns with reading, writing, math, any sort of, um, learning difficulties. And hopefully it's not being addressed for the first time in high school. Um, um, they also have, I split up the amount of case managers, there's eight case managers at the elementary school and then there's eight, oh, ten case managers among fifth through twelfth. Um, but again, the majority of your referrals, um, in needs and requirements are at the elementary school, as it should be. Um, so looking at the positions, um, they would be a hundred ninety-eight days, the hundred eighty-six teacher contract days plus twelve additional, which again, could be spent, you know, cleaning up things at the end of the year, coming in a little bit earlier, the beginning of the year, um, doing file reviews, um, looking at the upcoming caseloads for the year, consulting with staff, things like that. Um, so it would balance out the workload, but would also improve the collaboration, um, to ensure that special ed timelines are being met and nothing's falling through the cracks. Um, and then Holly, so gracious, she looked at the monetary part of it, and I'll let you explain.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, also, we'd like to say we had three.
Yes.
Amazing applicants that all definitely want the job.
Yes.
But their big questions, knowing that it's a school psychologist job, was asking about the summer. And what's that like? Because, um, we consulted with other districts and like Sarah said, they're all, it's all school year. Prior to making this position year-round, which we did because we didn't. Prior to making this position year round, which we did because we didn't, we couldn't, our school psychologists, we used to have one at each school back in the day. And they, as they were leaving, we couldn't replace them. So this was a way to try to get all testing done. Um, but as we saw, it's really not sustainable. So then we took, turned around and looked at, okay, so being in a default, having a default budget, how could we make this happen? So what I pulled here for you was salaries that are in the FY twenty-six budget. So our school psychologist salary, um, the full year salary that we have in there. We currently have a speech language pathologist position that has been open for two school years that we are contracting services for. Um, we have an anticipated opening for next year for a second speech, speech pathologist, which we don't believe, where we've had one open for two years, that we're gonna fill both of them. So we're looking if this proposal goes through to maybe do one pathologist and one which is called an assistant, which we've posted as anticipated and have an applicant for. Um, and an interview. So, and Sarah spoke with the team and they figured that could work. We're trying to find different ways and saving money to make all of these positions work, cause they haven't. Um, also our ELL teacher, a couple of years ago, we made that position full-time, cause the case number, you know, exploded. Um, that teacher is able to complete the responsibilities of their job at, uh, percentage of seventy-five percent. We spoke with her, she said that is good for next year. Um, the same way, however, in the budget, we have the position budgeted as full-time with benefits attached to it. So if we take, um, the one full year school psychologist, split it into two, take the savings from doing, from taking the speech language pathologist and moving it to an SLPA, and then taking the savings from what the ELL teacher will make next year compared to what is budgeted. And we would need, um, some grant funds, which we have this year, so we should have them, we're hoping we have them next year. Um, our total salaries would be one forty-four, six fifty-three. We've caught, looked at other districts to say, like, what's your starting salary for a school year psychologist? The psychologists, um, that have been interviewed are new to the field. So we feel that sixty-five dol- sixty-five thousand dollars, sorry, would be fair. That gives us a total for salaries of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So we would actually be saving some money out of the budget. Um, benefits don't have to come into play really at all here. So the school psychologist position, the speech language that we're looking to restructure, and that L, ELL teacher, since they're all in the budget as full-time, they all have benefits attached to them already. So we're just, we were just trying to say, how do we take these psychologists, the one psychologist position and these speech language pathologists that we cannot fill and find a way to make this work? So that is.
Yeah, and like Holly said, like, yeah, like Holly said, we've had three candidates. They're all actually, I guess they're on the same age, and I'm not good at guessing ages, so don't ask them how. Oh, they are, but, um, you know, they're all, they're all in there, yeah, they're all in there, like, ending their graduate programs right now. And they're all gonna be done in June. Um, they're from various parts of the country, everyone is somehow coming to New Hampshire for some reason, which is fine. So, you know, they're all, they're, I don't wanna say young, but they're young and they're eager and they're all ready to, to jump into this position. And I would really hate to miss on that, um, you know, because of, of kind of how our position is currently structured. Um, you know, July and beginning of August for school psychologist, really, I'm not diminishing it, but there's really not much going on. You know, there's no kids in school, there's nobody to test, there's nobody to observe. Um, every now and then you get a referral over the summer. And in that case, you know, what I've done in a previous district is that we'd call them one of the school psychs in the district. They would come in, get, they'd get paid a, you know, per diem or whatever to, to come in for the meetings. Um, but those aren't frequent, um, they're kind of rare. Um, so we would work on that. But, you know, it's, it's something I think that would work out. It would make the workload a lot more manageable, they'd be a lot more accessible to the special ed staff, rather than bouncing around, you know, from all the buildings saying, I can't meet with you, cause I have to be here. Um, I think it just would be more manageable, I think would make it more efficient. Um, and I would really appreciate consideration of this.
We want to bring someone or two people into the district, like, they're coming in new into this career, right? And we talk about co- culture and climate, and you don't want to bring someone in that's just gonna get burnt out in the year and be like, wow, this is not gonna work for me. We want someone that's gonna come in and stay, because these positions are so hard to fill.
I was reading this, and I'm, I'm appreciative of the creativity behind it, especially the sensitivity going to a default. My initial reaction was, is this a new position?
So, I would say no, because all of we, we've had school psychologists in the past that were school year plus the extra days.
That's what I heard in your description, and I'm appreciative of that, cause I'm like, well, I, you know, I was really struggling with this.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
I'm like, ah, are we gonna get into the debate about a new position or not, right?
Yeah.
So that alleviates some of my concerns, so thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Um.
I, I, I mean, I can't express enough how much I appreciate how much work you've put into this. Like, it's one thing to come to us, like, you know, when you're doing it day in and day out, you know what you're seeing and what you need, to take the time to sit down and break down how much time there is a deficit for. You know, when you, if you are related to an educator, I was married to one, you see firsthand how much imbalance there is. There's not enough time in the day to get those things done, but yet we just tell them, get it done, find a way. Um, this really, this illustrates that, this shows us two hundred thirty-four hours. And it is going to be impossible to retain people if we are expecting them to do an extra two hundred thirty-four hours of work that we're not allocating for them. So, thank you both for putting the work into this, I fully support this.
Can you just explain to me how it's not two positions? Cause I don't, I, no, how it's not a new position, I'm sorry.
It's, it's not to, it's not a new position, because it was a position, there were three positions already in the budget at one point in time. And this is splitting it out, because they haven't been filled. This is splitting it out and reestablishing a position that already existed.
So we went down.
Yeah, I know, I, it just, I've read it a couple of times, and I'm better, was this a regular math problem than a word math problem?
Contracted services, cause we weren't able to fill it.
And then in terms of, the district has had school year, school psychologist before, you used that one at each building. So this is kind of reverting back to, instead of being a full year district level person, you're reverting back to a more similar structure to that. Only instead of having three, you're gonna have two, you're gonna have one K, pre K through four, and then five through twelve.
I mean, we take three, but that's just not gonna work.
In simplest, in simplest terms of our current positions, like as, like laid out on a budget thing, you're trading one of these speech pathologists that we haven't been able to fill for a, a school psychologist.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, I guess my other question though is with the speech. So you're saying that you can get by with a speech pathologist and a assistant?
Yeah, so I spoke with, um, not particularly about this, that was kind of before we, I kind of came to this idea. Um, but just in thinking of next year, I, right now, we have a contracted, um, speech assistant. We talked about, you know, cause the contractors are now coming to me, like, oh, are we renewing these people for next year? So I've, you know, been having conversations with different staff. Um, and they said that, you know, having a speech assistant is helpful if they can get that second position filled with an SLP. So, and they've both said that if they could do that, then having an assistant would be perfectly fine.
And I just wanted to take a moment to interrupt and just switch topic for a brief moment.
Go ahead.
Um, if, if we're approaching seven thirty, and if the board sees any blue lights out in the parking lot, uh, today is World Autism Day.
Yes.
And I want to recognize that.
Yep.
And at seven thirty this evening, all the blue lights from the police cars and from everything is gonna be turned on. So if you get distracted by any lights that are blue, I'll make sure we recognize that. That, that is being recognized tonight with the police department.
That's awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So we need a motion?
Yes, please.
Uh, were there any other questions? I wanna make sure that my left side has an.
No, I, I mean, I think this is the exact kind of creativity we need at this point in terms of having unfilled positions for so long, but still having the need for the services and being able to, uh, move things around. And to me, you know, again, I understand the question about, is it a new position or not? I agree it's not a new position, um, but I think this speaks volumes to why you guys need to be able to get creative in terms of meeting needs with what you have. So, we don't have to deal with that, we don't have to cross that bridge, because it isn't a new position. But I, you know, I, again, I just want to commend you for, um, what you're doing um, and, and coming up with a creative solution to solve it, that helps students.
Provides you relief.
Hopefully.
Yeah, hopefully.
I agree. It, it's, my purpose for running for school board is to look and find stuff like this. Right, is, the business has gotta do it all the time, so, um, this is the stuff that I love to see.
All right, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the restructuring of the speech language pathologist position, the reduction.
School psychos.
Aren't you restructure, it says right here, restructure position to SLPA.
I guess, yeah, that's.
I'm doing a whole thing.
Oh, we're doing a whole thing, okay.
No one could, no one could challenge it.
Sorry, keep doing it.
Restructuring the, uh, school language pathologist position to the SLPA. Reduction of the ELL teacher to one, from one point zero to point seven five percent. And the addition of two school year psych, school psychologists.
That was a long motion by Mr. Shoemaker?
I think I covered it all right, did I get it off?
You got all of it, yes.
Is there a long second?
Uh, no, second.
Just a second, just a second. So a motion by Mr. Shoemaker, second by Mr. Plansky, additional discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Abstained, five zero.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next up, we have facilities discussion.
Yes.
Wah, wah.
Uh, so there's two documents there. The first one, uh, is the current kind of, uh, guiding articles for Facilities Improvement Committee. These were approved, uh, I think last, like, last June, last June, um, by the school board. And I think conjunction with the Facilities Improvement Committee and the school board, relooking at these articles in terms of, uh, appointing, not appointing, um, term lengths, like different aspects of it, you know, we, we've talked about relooking at it at the last, yeah.
You guys are welcome to leave.
Oh, yeah.
You guys do not have to stay.
We are.
Thank you.
Happy night, you guys.
Happy night.
Have a good night.
Um, at the last facilities meeting, I said I would take a stab at, uh, at updating these articles. So I took a stab at updating these articles. They're just somewhere to launch off a discussion from, I, I take no.
I think you killed it.
Well, thanks, I appreciate it. But if there's anything you want to change, adjust, or you don't like, or, or whatever, I'm not offended by any of it, just, we need to start somewhere. So the second one is kind of proposed update. It is kind of the, it's green on my document, but the red line approach where I didn't want to delete anything, so you could see the changes comparatively to the original set. So you can see changes. Um, and what we're really trying to tackle is again, like, questioning whether or not the board's appointing people, how long are people gonna be a part of it, how is it gonna mirror? So this is an attempt, and I think what we were thinking is, we would bring it to the board this evening for you to kind of talk about, go over. We'll bring it to the Facilities Improvement Committee. Um, next week, we are meeting for them to kind of review, and as kind of collectives, we'll keep updating these as appropriate. So everyone's happy with it.
So I guess the only, um, I see that we've moved the school board rep to a non-voting member. So that would mean that the only voting members are the citizens, right?
No, well, I was trying to represent that, like, in the past, right, that's been the two of you. One of you has voted, one of you haven't, but you've both been present.
Oh, I see, I'm sorry, I missed the, the one above.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, one vote, one voting.
Yeah, yeah, I gotcha.
So like, just representing that in this document, that there'll, there'll be two school board people there, but only one person's gonna vote.
I gotcha. The only other comment that I have, and I don't think that it's necessarily, uh, like, impacted by this. But I do think that, um, with having people on the committee, having people that want to remain on the committee, it is, it is useful to have some consistency. I know that it's also useful to be able to get new voices and stuff like that, but this is a committee that's really, it's challenging, cause there's a lot of history. Well, that.
Well, I think there's a lot of knowledge too. I think, and this may or may not be a dumb idea, the, until we get a recommendation to the school board, I don't think we should make any, add anybody or remove anybody from this committee, or we're gonna lose ground, right? Perhaps after we make some sort of recommendation to the school board, we can talk about appointing folks um, to that meeting, and maybe tightening up what the membership is.
Yeah, so a couple of things, just my thought process attending these meetings, again, not married to any of this, it's, it's at all. I came up with like probably nine, you want an odd number of citizen representatives, so when you vote, you have an odd number. Um, and nine seem to be kind of the consistency, just thinking about attendance there. Um, if who shows up, I'm not saying it has to be nine, but.
Yeah, I've just done the math, but there's no, we, we wouldn't have to cut someone, right?
That's what I was trying to do, I was trying to do the math, and I think nine covers everyone who's been pretty consistent about going. And then if you think about terms, again, I just use the school board as the model, and we do not have to stick to three-year terms. You get to appoint every other year, some other system, right? Is, um, you would want to kind of appoint people in kind of like a timeframe where you had some consistency as overlapping, but you had ability to change up who was prior to the committee, depending on different, um, people interested in different projects. I mean, hopefully we'll, we'll get a solution for GMS, and then the facility's gonna, this committee's gonna live on, but we're gonna have new things that will need of attention. Like, I could see way, way down the road, like, talking about athletic fields, right? Like, and there might be a different set of people who are interested in that type of facility thing, right? So you want to have the flexibility to change up this committee to kind of meet those needs and everything.
So budget does like three-year, two-year, one-year, or three-year and one-year terms?
I was trying to make that work too, like different lengths for different people.
They actually, they actually are intended to be three-year terms, and they just.
Couldn't find.
Well, the problem is, is when people resign early.
Oh, okay.
Right, and then they become the balance of the terms.
Oh, all right.
Yeah. If we were to do like three-year terms, we would have to kind of randomly, like, take the consistent people and kind of like randomly assign them into a slot, you know what I mean?
Hey, you're here till twenty thirty.
Right, exactly, like, or something along those lines, like, I don't know, like, I just started fresh here.
I don't necessarily, I mean, I don't think it's a, it's a super heavy lift to, uh, shift it to one-year terms.
Yeah.
You know, and.
Can we just talk about the longevity of the facilities committee for a moment? Right, cause I think that's important here. Like, what is the facilities committee going to do post-GMS? And, and what is the citizens' representatives going to look like post-whatever the recommendation is, GMS? Cause I feel like the committee is great, they've done, all of you have done tremendous work over the past year to get us to hopefully, hopefully a decision soon. Right? But, what, is the committee and the citizens, uh, on the committee still passionate about taking it forward post that? Or is, cause the charter originally was, like, get us to a decision, right?
Yeah.
And is it evolving beyond that now?
I, I think, well, it hasn't, it's not evolving beyond that primarily because we have so much to do with GMS. But, uh, you know, with that said, the way that I view this is, we are gonna consistently face facility issues that are going to be things that the public is going to have a real concern about, because they're always gonna be expensive. Um, and we're not in a position to, we, it, it's gonna be many, many years before we're in a position where we are putting away money sufficiently to actually cover stuff. If, I mean, if in our lifetimes, quite honestly, because the.
Hope it's our lifetimes.
Wow, I mean, I, I'd be honest with you though, it's, you're looking at two point five million dollars for just the roof at CHS, right? Like, for us to be able to start getting adequate reserves, I, I don't, it's gonna take forever. So that means that every time that we have to figure something out, it's going to likely be a bonded project. Um, and we know that when taxpayer C bond projects, they get really concerned. I think that having this community input has, at least the feedback that I'm seeing, has been very positive that they, people feel like there's at least enough voices involved that we're gonna be proposing something that's not super biased, so.
On-site insight, did that include tariffs or not?
Tariffs.
Tariffs.
No.
For the rubbery.
But I, I think that's where, like, I, I haven't shared this with anyone outside of like Julia, but like, one of the things we're working on is like a long-term, like, spreadsheet master plan of capital improvements, right? This goes all the way out to twenty fifty or whatever it is, we have twenty, twenty, twenty-five years there. Using the onsite insight reports, like, I know the onsite insight reports, people are focused on GMS, but we did all three schools with the idea of developing this plan for all three schools. So what I see the facilities committee is, is referring to this plan and helping us make decisions on sticking to it, making adjustments where appropriate as different needs come and go.
That's the right approach, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, when I joined as a citizen, it wasn't just for GMS. Because what I saw was a pervasive issue, right, across the district. And for, not pointing fingers, but me walking through all three buildings and looking at it and looking at the structure of the state and what has to go through bond and what's not planned for, right? Is, it, it goes against everything that I do in my normal work, so to me, it's. What has to go through bond and what's not planned for, right, is it it goes against everything that I do in my normal work, so to me, it's, it's an issue, so. I joined to solve the problem long-term, not the short-term decisions. Um, and exactly what Brian is doing is exactly what I do at work, is a long-term ten. I look at ten years, my window of opportunity is five years, so I'm trying to budget five years out for stuff. And looking at it that way, so, and and that's exactly right. It's, you start with a long-term plan and you create a committee and a decision cycle. In approvals around, you know, proper administration of, you know, what's the next things to go tackle.
Yeah, I would agree, I think the the committee will stay, just because there's so much to do over the next, what do you got?
Twenty forty-four, yeah.
Twenty-five years.
No, thank you for that clarity, right, because.
I think the the spotlight is on it because GMS is such a big.
Yeah.
A big task that we need to deal with.
Yeah, but once that spotlight is addressed, there's going to be another spotlight, you know, there's always going to be another spotlight.
Yeah, and and the point of the long-term capital plan, which is why I'm really glad that, you know, we approved the onsite insight reports is to. Uh, let's turn the spotlight into a floodlight, right? Let's look at all the issues and let's start coming up with a plan for addressing all of the issues and not play whack-a-mole as things come up.
Okay, so what's next, where do we go?
So if 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 you, if you have any suggestions for this document, let me know, I can update, right? Um, I, I think the next step is to bring this to the FIC, you know, next week, have them also review it, give feedback on it. And then kind of come back to the board for you to kind of, you have to eventually approve any any updates to these um guiding articles, because it's a, it's a school board. Subcommittee there, so you have to be comfortable with anything, and if you do, then we do, and then that's the new updated stuff, so.
I think my only thing would be switching it to one year.
I think three years is a long commitment for people, I don't know that necessarily, you know, I would even be fine with two years, but I think three years is a long time.
I mean.
Yeah, I would agree.
Yeah.
If they're that passionate about it.
Yeah, right.
Right.
I wouldn't, I, in my head, I picture it being a pretty quick agenda item every year.
Yeah, I don't think it's going to be a heavy lift on us, and I think, given the fact that they're just. Community volunteers that are trying to do this, it's, I think it makes sense to check in early and make sure that it's still.
I think the only other question I had, and I don't have an answer for it, and I don't know what anyone else thinks about it, but. Is there a mechanism for removal of a member? There was a conversation about someone who misses three meetings in a row, loses their voting privileges for the next meeting, but. Is there a.
The school board can remove, uh, in, at at least the other way it is drafted, a school board can remove members for.
School board can, but not facilities, right, like, they don't, the committee itself doesn't.
Yeah, it's school board appointed, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I took a stab at removal, I, you know, you can look it over if.
And you gave reasons why.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Examples of reasons.
Yeah, but, you know.
But it's in our discretion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the whole attendance thing, and then who's going to keep track of, okay, you missed three meetings, you can't vote this week.
Should be in your minutes.
Yeah, well, and and so I know Dan Mitchell's been doing, has been doing the attendance, um, and keeping that, but. I think, you know, going forward, right, whoever's on the facilities needs to, um, and and I'll take part ownership in this, is. Bring a little bit more structure to it, right, is someone needs to be appointed to take minutes, not just hope someone does it, someone needs to be appointed to take attendance. Um, and if that person isn't there for the meeting, then it needs to be delegated, like, first thing. And kind of go through that ordinance as we go through. Um, I've been trying to do timed agendas, but that does not work very well at all. Um, and so it it's more structure around that.
I think we do like the budget and do a roll call vote at the beginning, so it's.
Yeah.
Somebody's keeping track.
Yeah, no, I, and.
Or at least on the recording.
And I think, you know, whoever puts out the meetings, whoever puts out the agendas, right, because that's one thing that I. I think we should try to get a little bit better about with that is agendas need to be a little bit more timely and structured and get out. Um, with links, right, so for links to the attendance, so that way someone isn't fumbling through the drive. To figure out where that goes and where that is, because Google's system still baffles me. Um, so it, that's, it, just some thoughts initially.
Yeah, I mean, I I think that aside from changing the term, I think that you, everything you drafted.
Are we killing nine citizen reps is the right number? To me, my initial reaction was like.
So these are all the. The committee that we have right now has been very, very, like, it's been a good mix. I think you get a lot out of the um, the people that are there. So I I would keep it at that.
I think that's what we have right now.
That's a decent number, and then you've got Brian, you've got Kerry, you've got other folks.
Does Andrew have it?
I think they were like twelve or thirteen people total at the last one.
Yeah, when you factor in like us administratively and other people, yeah.
Sorry, we were saying that we don't have access to the track changes.
Yeah.
So.
Oh, how come?
I had requested edit access so I could comment, that might be why.
Yeah, I have edit access.
I usually don't use, I don't usually don't use track, so I don't.
Well, somehow I got it.
I, we just don't see the headline version, which is why I didn't see that.
Like, terms and nine and nine seven, like, I don't see any of that.
That's, uh, let me see if I can fix that.
I still saw seven, I'm like, wow, okay, there's a lot of missing, but it's on my phone.
Looks, for me, it almost looks like the two things are the same.
I mean, I I can just hit the button that says request edit.
Yeah, do that.
So anyway, maybe you can just reshare that with.
I will reshare.
So it sounds like this is going to the FIC.
Did you click the bottom one, though? Because there's one that says proposed.
Yeah, I clicked both and it comes up the same.
Yeah, mine too.
I think I'm adjusting it right now, where you'll be okay.
Just one quick piece on this, in terms of minutes, and I don't know what. Again, we're in a default budget next year and we should think about it, but Jan does an amazing job with our minutes for school board meetings. FIC is.
Didn't we ask, though?
We, we, we did ask in the early, early days and.
We did, but you know what, the person who sat in that chair kind of.
Said no.
Said no.
Okay, well, maybe somebody else is in the chair now, and it could be worth having the neutral minutes and somebody who watches the meeting.
Did we ask that of the last?
We did, and it was going to be six hundred and fifty dollars, it was short money and.
Okay, well, I don't know if it's worth finding out.
We absolutely.
I can ask you.
It would be fantastic, because we spend a lot of time arguing over tone in the minutes.
Well, that's what I'm saying, like, having someone neutral who's just literally watching it, and she does a great job with our minutes.
Alright, that would be, that would be a huge help.
I.
She's probably watching like, oh, no. I've watched those meetings.
Well, her son does subject committee, right, so maybe between the two of them, I don't know.
I was trying to look into like the Google AI, like, how much would it cost to do auto minutes and everything, but there's issues with trying to do that, so.
Your meeting chat GPT.
Yeah.
I.
Yep.
Okay.
Well, just a thought to consider, I.
Please ask.
I'd make a motion.
My only other, my only other question here um is, I know the board had a discussion, probably, what, a month ago anyways. Um, on where committee member Oblinus stood as an appointed member on the committee, where does that stand now on his, like, stance of, like, is he actively participating, where?
Oh, yeah, he's, he's there.
Yeah.
So do we need to appoint him to continue to stay on the committee?
I think what we're, I think.
Where is he standing?
Well, I, do we, do we need to get this governance in front of the FIC and let the FIC approve this? And then the school board approve it, because then we have a governance or a policy to stand on.
Well, then we'll be appointing everyone.
But right now, I, you know, if you're making decisions, and I don't know how quickly we are at decisions, right, but. I I guess where I'm, my view here is specifically because Mr. Oblinus was an appointed member, right? He no longer has voting rights on your committee. Period. Our board is now set, we have a new board, right, we were clear in saying, we have a new board, the term for appointees resets. So I think we need to make a decision here on voting.
So they, the, playing the FIC side a little bit, right, is. Our governing articles don't say that it's, that there's terms to it. So what what the FIC agreed upon, what the school board approved at the time of when these governance articles were put in, was. There are no terms, it's just you're voting, the requirement for voting is you have to be attending. You get voting requirements or privileges on your sixth meeting, consecutive meeting and attendance, so I.
That's great for everybody else, but I saw Oblinus, that doesn't apply, he was an appointed member with voting rights.
Right, kind of in the prior iteration of this committee.
I think.
So I'd be fine to make a motion to allow him to vote if that's, I mean, again.
We'd basically be reappointing him.
Reappoint him until a recommendation is made and then.
FIC reorganizes and puts forward.
Something like that, for the interim period.
Is that a motion?
Sure.
Well, what's the motion, though?
Well.
Well, that's what I'm asking, but.
Well, I'm understanding that motion to be, for him to be reappointed.
Well, we, let's be clear on what the motion is.
What I'm trying to do right now.
Okay.
I'm understanding the motion to be that you were suggesting that he be reappointed until. This uh governing document is finalized and approved by the school board. At which point we would be reappointing.
Everybody.
All of the members.
Yeah, my, my motion was going to be until the time that everybody else is up, but.
Yeah.
That's more eloquent.
More lawyerly.
I'm confused on what the motion is.
It's like a, uh.
I'm sure.
Well, because, because I think that. What I was basically saying is we'll reappoint him until we do the full round of appointments when this is approved.
So.
So it's a stopgap.
Yeah, I I guess in my layman's terms, right? Status quo remains until we finalize this and appoint new, and we appoint the members. So he's a voting member now, he will stay until this document gets finalized and all new appointees are set.
And should this document be finalized at the same time that the recommendation comes forward to the board?
Yeah, I mean, I I'll go with.
I hope so.
Because it's, I mean, my understanding was the thought you started with, it should be the same people. There shouldn't be a change in the FIC until that recommendation comes forward, because you'll lose ground. So that's, I mean, I don't know, how far away is that recommendation?
I would hope to the next meeting.
I I am, yeah, and if I am still involved, I'm going to push for the next, at the next meeting.
Okay, so I I guess that answers my question of how long is the stopgap, which is essentially the next meeting.
Really, hopefully, one meeting, I think we're that close, we're.
This has to be approved, though, right, so, so, yeah, so.
So it's going to be at least one meeting, right?
But then our next school board meeting, we would approve this, at which point we would be doing the appointment.
It resets.
I would think, I don't want to hedge our bets that we can cover both topics in the next FIC meeting. Of making the recommendation and reviewing this. So I think we would be the next school board meeting after two FIC meetings.
I think we can send this out to the members.
I'm going to make a motion to, here's, here's what we're going to do, I'm going to make a motion to appoint Mr. Oblinus. Or to reappoint Mr. Oblinus up until the point where the uh the FIC reorganizes and the guiding articles. Come before the board to revote in which the new FIC committee members are reappointed.
I'll second that, because that's exactly what I said.
This is a motion by myself, and is that from Mr. Shoemaker, additional discussion?
No.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed, abstained, you're a genius.
Off the record.
So in the vein of, uh, I don't know if this was going to be discussed here, but in the vein of like reassigning a school board member, I do, I do think that. Unequivocally, Dan has to be involved with that. I, this has been a passion of mine, and I've been involved with it for a long time, but Dan has the. Your background is by far the most useful, one of the most useful on that committee, so we can't lose Dan on that committee. So I am, you know.
I don't think we're losing Dan, Dan's on the board. Dan's not going anywhere.
No, no, but I mean, in terms of, in terms of active participation in the, in every FIC meeting, like, I, he's, he's critical to that, so.
I think you all served a vital role in the committee, right, you all, you all did, right? Um, and I look at certainly the perspective you bring, your background you bring is fantastic, amazing, right? And that's guiding to the FIC and the direction of the FIC for long-term strategic planning. Which is amazing from your seat here at the board level.
Right.
Right? Um, and that steer is going to be critically important as we look forward.
Mm-hmm.
Right? I also think, like, Mr. Plansky, right, like, you were instrumental in helping kind of get the board, get the facilities committee to recognize. The will of the voter, right, and bringing that lens and what, what's real, right? And what do we think we is, can really get, has a shot at getting passed.
Yep.
Right, and and that lens is critically important in my mind too, because, like, it's all for nothing otherwise. Like, I don't, I don't want to be sitting here in two years with nothing.
What, the next part of what I was going to say is, I am willing, as much as it kills me, I am willing to step back uh from the FIC. Because I think that it's important, yeah, I mean, I do, I agree, like, we don't, we sometimes don't agree on things.
Sometimes.
Um, I would say that, you know, Dan and I are probably much more aligned on, we we view it the same way more so than you and I do, and I think having the differing view is. Probably good to have. If you want it.
Yeah, I do.
And I'm happy to serve as a backup if you guys ever can't make it.
Yeah, I I think that would be important, right, so is if Peter, if Peter and or I can't make it, right, is we have a backup that can step in as needed. Um, and go from there, but, no, I appreciate it, and I guess, do we have to pick which one is going to be chair?
Yes.
For the FIC?
Yep.
Um, I would be happy to be chair, um.
I'm going to make a motion to vote, uh, to, I'm going to make a motion to to nominate Peter as chair. And I can discuss that if I get a second.
And I'll second it for discussion.
Thank you. So again, from that critical lens of the voter and representing the the voice of the citizens. Who are serving on that committee, I think he's going to bring that perspective of bringing the Litchfield voice in that seat. And I think your perspective is critical from the long-term steer and in the strategy behind it. Vision-wise.
Right. No, and and again, I'm I'm not offended, trust me, right, is, so my, I I guess my thing is, anything that I would do as chair would be, I'm talking to Peter before I say, the school board says this. Type thing, or, you know, and it would be a conference between Peter and I on any big decisions anyway, um, and I would hope it would be returned. I I do know that there's going to be, um, you know, the next important step at the next FIC is electing the new citizen co-chair. So there's going to be, um, eh, expect uh debate and hot, you know, and I'll say passionate discussions. Um, with that, so I, I, I mean, I am willing.
I, before you, before you continue, I love you, I really like working with you. Dan has done an exceptional job as the citizen co-chair, and I personally would like to see him continue on in a, in. The leadership role with that, obviously, like he said, you know, we, we, just like Peter and I did, you know, there's, there was always, we we always. Voted together, but I do think that having.
I know, that's why I was getting back.
Having the pleasure or displeasure of uh running the FIC and knowing, and getting to see how Dan does that in the background, I think. It would be helpful for some of that stability, especially with, you know, the change in. Regarding with that.
I mean, I I think it would help with the stability of the GMS recommendation, right? And and if it needs to change after that, then I I think I would, I I don't see that being too big of an issue, but I think just from the stability standpoint of. Not trying to lose ground, not trying to see, you know, with the discussions that's going to come from that and. Having to realign the FIC as to who who's asking for what when, um, when I think we're kind of that close. Honestly, I really do hope next meeting, and if not, then I just may make a motion and just say.
It's coming next.
I, I, I really have the same mind, is that we're going to make a mo, part of the meeting is going to be in motion for a recommendation.
Yeah, it's, it's coming next, yeah, for sure.
So I, honestly, I I, doesn't matter to me, I mean, I I would be happy to do it.
Either way, right, the the idea behind the chair and and this, in the, in the committee is you're representing kind of the will of the board.
Right.
In leading that.
Yep.
So no matter who's in the seat, that's the spirit of that position.
Yeah, and.
It's no different than me sitting on the budget committee, right? I don't necessarily represent my opinion.
Well, that, in.
God knows that.
And that, that was the intent of my email back in like early March or end of February, right, is even if I am chair of the FIC. My perspective is changing, right, because it has to be in conference with the school board, not myself as a citizen anymore. Um, so e- either way, and and Peter, I I know you you've been around that thought process as well. So, and and bring in some realism to it, so. I mean, I I would hope, no matter who the chair is, that it's a conference between. I mean, I, I would hope, no matter who the chair is, that it's a conference between the two school board representatives to come to what do we think the school board wants to move forward with and do it, so.
So Andrew, I truly appreciate all, all the kind words. I think for continuity purposes, I would say that we have Dan do it. I will certainly be able to say my piece. I do think I represent a different perspective in the community, and I certainly be willing to, I'm going to express that voice, so.
All right, I'll withdraw my motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Dan. Do I need to make a motion as chair to represent the school board on, for FIC?
Yeah, go ahead. Just make it, make it clean. Motion by Ms. Sames, second by Mr. Shoemaker. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Post abstain. All right, so Dan will be primary, Peter will be secondary.
Working collaboratively.
Yes.
There you go.
Wow, it's, I feel like a weight has been lifted that I'm not responsible for bringing Andrew a recommendation up the next meeting.
Thanks, Matt.
Shannon's doing a happy dance over there.
She's definitely.
All right, the time is now eight o'clock. Um, just like that, we're going to open it up for our second round of community input this evening.
Wow, we stayed on time scale.
That almost never happens.
I'm going to close our second round of community input this evening, and we're going to get into policy updates.
None.
None.
Wanted to manifest real quick.
Yeah. Did you pass, did you hand, did you circle?
It's all done.
It's all done. Oh, we did that?
Yeah, we've decided you time your, like, one minute late arrival to. Signing.
Andrew has, you have the summer.
I sit in the parking.
I, I realize that now. I was jumping ahead in my head, so nevermind. In my own world.
Do we have any, we have no old business to connect with this evening? Okay, uh, school board comments?
Can I make one just by a couple of times going through the manifest? And I know you guys are already trying to redo how Amazon purchases and, like, emergency supplies are coming up. One of the things that I, I'll say pinged and irked me a little bit going through the credit card manifest is there is like sixty-seven lines of just, that just says supplies with not noting where it's going. Like, is it sixty-seven boxes of computer paper, right, type thing? And, um, kind of going down the path of what you've discussed of building relationships or possibly buying in bulk to get, find savings, which is some of the, like, that, that's what I'm picking out as I go through this. So if there is a possibility, doesn't have to be anytime soon, but in the future of trying to provide more fidelity to what those description lines are, um, just to make it a little bit easier to understand.
Absolutely.
Because I, I would, I would like to know if, if the same person or group of people are buying number two pencils, like, in, like, every month.
Yeah.
To be fair, they eat during the middle school.
Very true.
Depending on the meetings I'm in, I eat my pens and pencils, too, so I get it. It, it's just, it's just something that I pick out, that, that I run through with what I do with, in my job.
And Dan does a great job writing all that back up.
Oh, absolutely.
In the big items that you sign, right? And, and the problem is, is how do you scan all that?
Yeah.
In advance to, to see it in the manifest, right? And so.
Not, and.
A better description.
Yeah, and, and I, I don't need.
Supplies is a catch-all.
Right.
Miscellaneous stuff.
It's the first thing I look at in my budget line items at work is what, what are the catch-all buckets? And what is the catch-all bucket being used for? So this goes with labor charging and charge codes as well as my, my material budgets going from there. So I, I had to get on people of, they just kept saying attrition material. I was like, I don't know what that is. Is that a fifty-dollar part or is that a half-million-dollar part?
Wages.
Thank you.
My comment under school board comments is I did have an opportunity to talk to, uh, Chief Jox, um, about an upcoming Fisher Cats game. So he is absolutely intending to, uh, speak to the school board with this week's, uh, Red Sox home opener and, uh, some other activities he has got going on. He was not able to make it to tonight's board meeting, but he absolutely intends to. So just a quick plug, um, there's a lot of activity happening within the veterans group. Certainly, there's a, there's an event in, um, July, uh, where they're looking to collaborate, the veterans group is looking to collaborate with the schools. What? Well, cornhole too, but that's separate, right? So, um, they're looking to collaborate with schools to, uh, get some ticket sales, uh, for Fisher Cats game during the summer. So more to come on that, but definitely stay tuned and, uh, good stuff happening with the veterans group.
Yeah.
They're doing cornhole right now?
It's underway. The competition starts next week, and veterans have been in at the middle school playing cornhole at lunch, don't get hurt.
That started last week, too, right? Was it last week? Yes, yeah, he was telling me about that. Fantastic.
I gotta get my daughter trained up. I gotta make a new set for her and I to play.
All right, uh, final item tonight is our manifests. Our manifest is from March nineteenth. Uh, we have our payroll of three hundred and fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars and forty-two cents. We have our voluntary four-on-three B deductions, eight thousand, two fifty-two-ten. Uh, we have our accounts payable that was signed at three hundred and sixty-four thousand, eight hundred and twenty-one dollars and eighty-nine cents, as well as our accounts payable to EverSource of fifteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars and eighty-seven cents. And with that, with the board does have some actions tonight in public under RSA ninety-one A three and specifically, uh, Articles A and C. And with that, uh.
Andrew, can I just interrupt one second? Sorry, I got an email from, um, a teacher at GMS asking for a clarification on the child find. Um, if anybody does want to go to child find and does not have an appointment, please reach out to the school so that they can find appropriate time slots for people, because she was like, ah, and I was like, oh, good point of clarification. So I just wanted to.
Thank you for that plug.
If you would like to go, please contact the school, and we'll help you out.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And thank you for the note in. Um, so now we'll entertain a motion to move into non-public.
Salute.
We'll call the, uh, motion by Mr. Shoemaker, by Ms. Sames, and, uh, Shoemaker.
Aye.
I am an aye. Sames?
Aye.
Mr. Dewitt?
Aye.
Terry's five-zero.